Good evening, and I'd like to call to order the City of Sonoma Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, March 14th, 2019. And with that, I'll have a call to order, please.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Willander.
Here.
Chair Felder.
Here.
Commissioner Bohar.
Here.
Commissioner Barbosa.
Here.
And Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Here.
Christina, alternate.
Excuse me, Robert McDonald. Commissioner McDonald.
Thank you. With that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask Commissioner Barbosa to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I would ask everyone to please put your cell phones or other devices on silence so that they don't disrupt the meeting. We have a very full agenda this evening, so there will be no new items heard by the Planning Commission after 10:30 unless the Commission, by a majority vote specifically, decides to continue reviewing items. If an item's not heard due to the length of the meeting, we will attempt to schedule a special meeting as soon as we can. I really would like to make every attempt, however, to get through this agenda tonight, so I'm going to ask the Commission to try to keep your questions as brief as possible and your discussion succinct and to the point. And I also ask indulgence of the audience as well to try to keep this item moving along so we can get through all of the items on the agenda. Any decision reached by the Planning Commission tonight may be appealed to the City Council. Appeals must be filed by the city clerk within 15 calendar days following the Planning Commission decision. And with that, we have comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. It's recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited for a comment at the time the item comes up for consideration. With that, please approach the podium, state your name, and speak into the microphone, and we have our first person.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. Lynn Marie de Vincent, 65 Guadalajara, Community Outreach Coordinator for the Sonoma Neighborhood Association, educating the public on 5G cell tower invasion. Well, today started out just as Pi Day, celebrating a mathematical constant, the ratio of the circumference of a circle to its diameter. I thought that was a nice reassurance in today's not-constant-whirling world. And to add to that reassurance, I am bringing good news from Danville, which is a charming town, a population of 44,000, and also the 14th wealthiest zip code in America. So I've sent you the clip, the video clip, from their City Council meeting last week when they voted four to one to deny their cell tower permit. I hope you have a chance to watch, it's only seven minutes long. And also, the California Sierra Club has passed a resolution opposing the deployment of 5G and small-cell technology without local input and environmental review. So just briefly, from their resolution, "The increase in cell tower installation as part of the 5G rollout is unprecedented and became effective regardless of the recent federal government shutdown. The 5G deployment was already launched for parts of Sacramento and LA in October 2018, with other California cities to follow. Due to the 1996 Telecommunications Act, a cell tower can't be removed, even for health or environmental reasons, once it has been installed. So once infrastructure is put in, it will increase the difficulty of and may undermine the community's abilities to protect the public's health and safety." And just one other short paragraph, Mill Valley, San Anselmo, Ross, Petaluma, Hillsborough, Monterey, and other cities have adopted ordinances. 5G opposition is also under discussion in Fairfax, San Rafael, unincorporated Marin Napa, Sonoma, yay, were in their resolution, Sebastopol, Elk Grove, San Mateo, and many other cities nationwide. So I thank the city staff for the work that they've done and the City Council on this so far, and appreciate the work you're doing on this project. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Felder, members of the Commission. My name's Bill Willers, I live at 873 First Street West. I'm here tonight to speak about a quasi-piece of legislation that has worked its way from the Metropolitan Transit Commission called the CASA Compact. It is one of the most impactful design, planning documents to hit the state of California in a long time. Basically, it takes all nine Bay Area counties, puts them into one region, and dictates how each community will meet its fair share housing requirement. If that community has the benefit of transit now or in the future, it will be dictated what will happen adjacent that transit. If you're not aware of this, make yourself aware of it. The City Council will take the item up on Monday. It will have the most impact on planning in the Bay Area over the next 15 years as anything has had in the Bay Area. Essentially, what the Compact says is that we're all responsible for the Bay Area housing crisis that I believe was caused by major cities in the Bay Area not fulfilling their housing impacts when they allowed an overgrowth of commercialization in office space and employee growth within their communities and failed to provide housing for those employees. Now what they want to do is make the communities that surround them in the nine Bay Area counties share that shortfall, basically mandate that. This CASA Compact is also being codified by the legislature through various state, through various bills, it's a state legislature, to codify the, basically agreements, or whatever you want to call them, as part of the CASA Compact, the mandates essentially. Mandates like a minimum of 20 units to the acre, a minimum of 36 feet if you're along a bus route, a minimum of 50 feet if you're along a bus route, all of this being done without local review. It is essentially mandated zoning for local jurisdictions. It's out in circulation to get support by the Bay Area cities and county jurisdictions, and I would urge every one of you to write to the people that represent you and say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
David Eichar. Well, since we really don't have much of a public transportation here in this city, I'm not sure how much CASA is going to impact us, but I, now that it's been pointed, I'm going to look deep, further into it to find out. The main reason I came up here was that it's been mentioned, at least by one Commissioner, that you don't like to get late correspondence from the public, that it's difficult to read and might not be able to read it in time. So I guess one question I have is, what do you consider late correspondence? When would you like to have the correspondence from the public? And then one suggestion would be to put, say, on the website, a future agendas, maybe not all the details, but, you know, I didn't know, you know, any of the things that's coming up on the, tonight's agenda until the whole packet came out. So if you could publish, say, two or three weeks out, or even a month out, these are tentative dates for these items, then I could start looking into it ahead of time and maybe get my responses out a little quicker. And then the honor of Pi Day, for my last two minutes, I'd like to recite Pi out to the nth digit, three-point, no, I'm just kidding.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Item four is the review and acceptance of the agenda. Does anyone from the Commission have any changes or things to be made spoken on that one? Veronica, do I have to go out to the public on this as well?
We typically do, but...
On the review of the agenda?
Oh, on the review of the agenda, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no comments, we'll move on to late correspondence.
We receive late correspondence on item number 7.1 and 7.2, and it's at your place, also posted on the website.
Thank you. Next item is consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. No separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. On tonight's consent calendar, we have the approval of minutes from six meetings, and I hope that everyone has, yes, so anybody who would like to pull one of those?
I don't want to pull them, I'm going to say that I've got to abstain from voting on all but the 12, 21, 221, and 225 minutes, because I was not seated as a Commissioner on the other meetings.
Similarly, I'll be abstaining on all of these since I wasn't on the Commission at that point.
Likewise.
Anyone from the public care to pull anything from those minutes? Seeing none, I will then ask for a motion to approve those minutes?
Can I pull the February 25th, the last special draft minutes?
You may.
Or can I just make some edits to it?
I've already made an edit that you recused rather than were absent, if that's what you're going to do.
That was one of them.
Okay, but you may make some other edits.
All right, and I, so first of all, I appreciate that, so thank you. The other edit I had was between item 5.1 and 5.2, I moved up the Commissioner comments.
And we also, I think, took care of that in the minutes, so they have been corrected already.
Okay, well then, thank you.
With that, I'll look for a motion to accept all of these items on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Aye.
Commissioner Willander.
Aye.
Commissioner Bohar.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbosa.
Abstain.
Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Aye on the two meetings in which I participated.
Chair Felder.
Aye. Motion carries, however many that is.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Ish. Six to zero, I think, because we had an abstention on all.
Six to zero.
Okay. We will then move into a public hearing. And item 7.1, I believe we may have some people that need to recuse or whatever on that item.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from item 7.1 due to proximity.
I need to recuse myself from item 7.1 because I served on the board for four years, ending in December. Let me clarify that, the Board of the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation, which has their headquarters at the Mason Avi House.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. And Larry.
I, this pertains to some of the late correspondence that came up pertaining to a recusal on my part, and I'm not going to recuse myself, and at the appropriate time, I will speak to that issue.
Thank you. So with that, we will hear the use permit application of the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation. As less see of the property owned by City Sonoma, more commonly known as Mason Avi House, located at 291 First Street East, to operate home and property as a museum related, with related support of fund-raiding uses. With that, I will ask our Planning Director to give the report, if he is, oh, you're going to do it for us? Thank you. Yes.
I think, having met with the city attorney earlier today, he asked that I explain my non-recusal at this point in the meeting, so, if I may. As the public may note, and certainly the Commission members know, there were two letters sent late communications to the Commission alleging that I had expressed bias on this matter due to comments made at a meeting in 2016. This was the meeting of February 1st. Just to set the record straight, I was not in attendance at the, at the, at the February 1st meeting of 2016. I do not appear on the videotape, nor do my, any comments by me appear in the minutes. So this alleged expression of bias certainly didn't happen at that meeting, despite the fact of that both signers of both of these letters allege that they were in attendance at the meeting and heard me make these comments. And anyone, of course, is welcome to review the tape of the meeting, which is online, and examine the minutes for themselves. That aside, it's really not, to me, the crux of the issue. Having been an outspoken and engaged public citizen in this community for many years, I have made many comments to, before the City Council, on a wide range of topics, as a private citizen during the three-minute period when members of the public can either comment before a meeting or on a specific agenda item. This is to say that at some point in time, certainly wasn't at this meeting, I may have made a comment about an opinion or concern that I had about the use of the Mason Avi House. But once again, that's not so germane to this issue of recusal, and I want to explain why. One of the, one of the lessons I learned in 12 years in elected office, and that I've brought to this position, is the understanding of that when one is actually a member of a public body, one actually, to an extent, gives up, in my opinion, and the opinion of others, some of the free speech rights that we normally think of as being perfectly ordinary. The responsibility one has when one is on a body like this, or the City Council, is to maintain a position of impartiality, to set aside one's personal opinions, even one's prejudices, listen to the comments of the public, the fellow Commissioners or Council members, as the case may be, and the city staff, and weigh all those comments and opinions, and then render a decision in a fair and unbiased fashion. That's the way I have attempted to conduct my public service, it's the way I intend and will conduct my public service on this body. And, and for those reasons, I do not feel that I am biased on this issue, and despite whatever comments someone alleges or thinks they may have heard me say at some point in the past, that was at a minimum three years ago. The conditions and comments, the conditions were three years ago, the comments were made in light of the information I had at hand three years ago, and that is not what's going to be coming before this Commission tonight. Tonight, we're going to be getting information that's current, applicable, applicable and appropriate to the issue at hand that's on the agenda tonight, and those are the things that I'm going to take under consideration as I weigh the issues, along with my fellow Commissioners, to make a fair and unbiased decision. So I hope, for those of you who have that concern, it somewhat allays them, but in any event, the issue of bias when it comes to financial conflicts of interest is very clear. But I have no financial conflict of interest, and I have no conflict of interest in terms of my distance or owning property within 500 feet of the property in question. So anyway, those are my comments, that's why I will be participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnett. With that, I will then move to the staff for a report, and you're going to get, give that, Christina?
I am, thank you very much. We're here tonight to discuss the Mason Avi House use permit. The project site is located at 291 First Street East. So just a quick overview of the project site, it's adjacent to Depot Park and the Sonoma Bike Path. Assessor's parcel 018131006, it's highlighted in red. The project site is off First Street East, just south of Depot Park. The site is flat, approximately 1,400 square-foot property. It contains the historic Mason Avi House, which was constructed around 1910, and is approximately 1,400 square feet. The property also contains a garden and an approximately 200-square-foot carriage house. As I mentioned before, land use to the north is the Depot Park, and with a park zoning. East is residential development, which is zoned for mixed-use and medium-density residential. Also to the west is Depot Park and park zoning. To the south is a small hotel, and, which is zoned for a medium-density residential. The applicable property site development standards for the Mason Avi House are that the project is located in the northeast planning area, as I mentioned, it's zoned park. The park zoning applies to a variety of parklands, and from intensively developed playing fields and recreational facilities, including museums and recreation centers, to natural open space where development is limited to trails. The park zoning district is consistent with the parkland use designation of the general plan. Per our zoning code, allowable uses with a use permit include libraries and museums, recreational facilities, theaters and auditoriums, offices, government, and public facilities. The Mason Avi House was gifted to the city by Henry Mason Avi when he died in 1989. The city declared that the city policy shall be to use the property consistently with the desires of Mr. Mason Avi, that either for development as a memorial park or a museum facility. Currently, the Sonoma League of Historic Preservation holds a 25-year, 25-year lease with the city for the property, and that lease was for the purposes of establishing and maintaining a museum, and open, a research facility that's open to the public during established hours. The existing lease also permits other uses, as Commissioner Barnett was discussing before, those uses were worked out with the city several years ago. Those uses that are allowed by the lease are, include offices, meetings, and social events. In the past, the Mason Avi House has been rented out by the League for Historic Preservation as a special event center for private parties, weddings, celebrations, meetings, classes, a variety of events to offset the maintenance costs for the house, which are, I understand, pretty substantial, given the historic nature of the facility. So while historically we had, the city had, and the property owner had agreed on terms in the lease on what uses were allowed, no use permit was formally obtained by the applicant. And recently, in December 17th of last year, the City Council authorized the League to pursue a use permit to authorize the existing uses and propose others as desired by the League for Historic Preservation in order to help with the overall maintenance of the property. So after some back and forth with the applicant, what's before us tonight is use permit approval to continue use of the site for the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation's headquarters, which entails use of the conference room, an office for the League's part-time executive director, storage space for some archival materials. The applicant also proposes to use the front room, continue using the front room as a museum. There are essentially three uses that are being requested tonight, office use, continued use of the museum, and special events. The office use, the back office would continue to be used for the League headquarters. There's also a 300-square-foot conference room that is used for offices, office uses, meetings, gatherings, things like that. In addition, the League is requesting that the use permit cover kind of a future use for any office space, for the whole, the whole property, office spaces allowed by use permit, and so essentially through this process, we would be saying that at their discretion, they could use any part of that facility for office purposes. The existing museum use would be same as existing conditions. As I mentioned, it's in the front house, front rooms of the Mason Avi House, and it's open to the public currently Fridays between 10:00 and 12:00 p.m., and is about 650 square feet. The museum includes trained docents, and there are tours and other educational programs. The special events currently include lecture series, community-sponsored events, small league events, large events, and kind of a variety of sizes for, there's inside events, outside events, that are all dictated by the current lease. So the allowed uses that were in the lease are what was included in the application that's before us tonight. In order to approve the use permit before us, I have the required findings of approval for your consideration. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Commissioner Barbosa.
With respect to the uses that can be made of this, the language in the lease, which was not highlighted in this, on the screen, but it says, "Other uses customarily associated with a museum." And so my question is whether or not there's been any determination that something like a wedding, for example, is a use customarily associated with a museum, and I don't, I can't, I'm not that familiar with what museums customarily do, but I don't think I've ever attended a wedding at a museum, nor have I ever heard of one, but, except to the extent that they may have occurred here. So I think if we're looking at lease compliance, that's a question, is whether some of these uses are actually in conformity with the lease in terms of what is customarily done at a museum.
Yeah, so I just brought up the screen of the allowable uses in the zoning district, so libraries and museums are one, recreational facilities are another. To me, that's where the weddings would fit within a recreational facility, mini-community centers, things like that, that within parks have those types of events, whether it's a family reunion or a wedding.
Any other questions of staff?
I had a few questions. One has to pertain to the tenant right now, it's a 25-year lease. Does this use permit run with, my, I'm familiar with use permits run with land, not with the tenant, so if the tenant decides to vacate the property or terminate its agreement with the city, does this specific use permit then go up for grabs for another nonprofit? Or does this dissolve when the League decides to leave the property?
So it won't automatically dissolve when the League decides to leave the property, because it does, as you point out, run with the land. However, as the owner of the property, the city has the right to discharge its own use permit, meaning the city as the city can revoke the permit that it then holds, because running with the property means it would be the city's permit. So it can be summarily revoked, if you will, with the consent of the property owner at that point.
Okay. And my, my other question has to do with the type of use permit. Would we also be able to, say, for example, approve a temporary use permit like we have in the past, where a use permit runs with the land on a year-to-year basis, and it is called up on a, on a, like, a program time, so staff can evaluate the terms of the lease, the use, the terms and conditions of the use permit approval, and make a report to the Planning Commission?
So I think we probably need to look at the municipal code as respects the question of temporary use permits. My recollection of temporary use permits are they, is that they are intended to be things like, for lack of a better word, a pumpkin patch, or a tree farm, or other seasonal types of temporary uses, but we'll look at it.
Okay. And then the other question has to do with, there's... And then the other question has to do with, there's, I should say, there's nothing that precludes the city right now from actually selling the land, or transferring it to another jurisdiction, or, say, example, transferring it to a nonprofit. So, I guess my last question would be, if that were to occur, what becomes of the lease if the city decides to transfer it to a different agency or another nonprofit?
So, I'm not familiar, and I don't know if any of the other staff is familiar, with the terms and conditions of the bequest. And I don't have, certainly, we don't have the bequest in front of us. I do not know whether or not, based on the bequest from Mr. Masonavi, whether or not your statement as to whether or not the city could dispose of the property in the manner in which you suggest is accurate or not. I don't know that it is, but I don't know that it isn't. Assuming for the sake of this conversation, however, that it is accurate, and the city could defuse the property and sell it, it would still be subject to the restrictions in the grant. So, if a property is granted to a city subject to certain restrictions, it shall be used for the following five purposes, then that would transfer with the property to its next owner. With regard to the lease agreement, the lease agreement would transfer to the property for the number of years left on its term to a subsequent owner as well.
And would the use permit and conditions of approval transfer as well?
Yes.
Irrespective of who the property was being leased to or used by?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can, to respond to Commissioner Barbosa's question. Temporary use permits are, like Veronica said, pumpkin patch, carnivals, Christmas tree lots. In our municipal code, we are allowed as staff to approve those for up to a year. Typically, a pumpkin patch is 30 days or whatever, carnival's a weekend or something like that, and there's a list of those in the municipal code where it talks specifically about that. With respect to, can a use permit, so there's a temporary use permit, which is almost like an over-the-counter thing without, I can bring complex ones perhaps, that I don't feel comfortable with, that are a little bit not like a carnival, a little bit not like a pumpkin patch or tree farm, those can be forwarded to the commission, and that has been done in the past by myself. You may recall the one that we did with respect to the Chevrolet dealership. That's the most recent one. Then again, and then Veronica can correct me here, but we have had a situation where, in the past, I want to go back to 2006, only because I've had to do it since I've been here, there was a use permit that the commission granted for 90 days and have a report back, because it involved some sensitive noise issues, and there was a subsequent report back to the commission, and then it was allowed to operate at some point. So, I'd have to assume that there's some language in our municipal code to do that, but we'll check on that and report back.
So, on the screen in front of you, just to add to what Director Stor just said, on the screen in front of you, you see the provisions of the municipal code as respects temporary use permits. Under sub seven, you can see trial use. At its discretion, the planning commission may approve a temporary use permit in order to verify the compatibility of a proposed conditional use, so, like a one-year CUP trial is essentially what that's suggesting. This allowance shall not apply to applications involving new structures or building modifications for which a building permit is required. So, essentially, your code does provide, at least for one year, a trial period for a use permit to be granted on a temporary basis to see if its compatibility is appropriate to the structure and/or property where it is being proposed.
Go ahead.
Question. The current tenant has been using the facility without a use permit, and we're formalizing it this evening. To the best of our knowledge, has there ever been a formal complaint issued for an activity that had taken place there?
Not to my knowledge.
Not in the last five months that I'm aware of. I do believe, however, part of the question about whether there was or not a use permit resulted as opposed, as opposed to, resulted because of concerns about the frequency of the uses going on at the property.
If I may, oops, if I may, Mr. Chair, back to Commissioner Barbosa's question about the lease agreement itself. Under paragraph four of the lease are the purposes for which the lease is granted and the uses that are allowed under the lease itself, as opposed to the use permit, and one of the items listed is social events.
If I may, though, it says "other uses customarily associated with museums, such as offices, meetings, and social events." So, I would think that the social events have to be customarily associated with the museum, and that was the original question I raised. I mean, I can say, I'll say this for comments, but I don't happen to think that having a wedding there is consistent with the lease.
And I think that's why it's in front of the commission this evening, for you to make that determination.
Commissioner Barnett?
Another question on the lease from the city, for the city attorney. If I understand, one of the suggestions in this discussion is the sub, what constitutes apparently the sublease of the property, or a portion of the property, to another nonprofit. I didn't see anything in the lease that allows for the sublease of the property. So, I assume that in order to approve that, it would require a lease amendment.
That would be correct.
And that would be something that the city council would have to do, am I correct?
Also correct.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? If not, we'll open it up to the public, and would the applicant care to make a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Alice Duffy, and I'm the president of the board for the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation, and I've been taking some notes, and I can answer some of the questions that have been posed up here a few minutes ago. But before we get started, I want to reintroduce the league to staff, commissioners, and the audience. We are a 50-year-old organization, and our mission is the preservation of historic resources in Sonoma Valley. Our territory goes from Kenwood down to Shellville, although most of our work seems to happen in the city of Sonoma. We operate on a shoestring budget. We have one part-time executive director, Chuck Bingaman, who's here taking notes, who is virtually volunteer, based on the number of hours that he donates to the organization. We have approximately 175 members, plus 46 plus-or-minus life members, who pay on a sliding scale starting as low as, this is my pitch, everybody should be a member, rates start at $40 for seniors, go to 95 for families, and then there's a business rate. I mention these numbers just specifically because our members and our dues from membership certainly does not support the organization. We have, the Masonavi House is our administrative headquarters, which, as Christina has said, we use for office space, conferences, archival materials, member events. The house, while wonderful office space, provides a lovely forum for our members, it's expensive to maintain. It costs us an average of $1,500 to $1,800 a month just for routine maintenance. A lot of that is based on just maintaining a historic resource, which has its own issues, and we don't disparage that. It's something that we knew that we were taking on when we assumed the lease. As an organization, we raised quite a large amount of money to actually restore the building. What we're asking for tonight is a remedy for an administrative oversight that happened years and years ago. I think that everybody was busy trying to formalize the language of our agreement with the city and lost sight of the fact that we could have had a conditional use permit for this property. There might have, at the time, I was asking around with people who were involved in the negotiations, and at the time, there was some discussion about whether there was a use permit needed on city-owned land at all. Either the decision was no, or it was just dropped in the confusion. What we're asking for tonight does not represent an increase of use for the property. We have been very sensitive to our neighbors' concerns about noise and parking and having too many events. We have not exceeded our informally agreed-upon numbers for events. I could go through some of the numbers about how many events we've had, and how much money the events raise versus how much the house costs, but for the most part, the events that we are proposing in our use permit now are barely enough to cover the expense of maintaining the building and having a tiny bit left over to support our mission. I wanted to address specifically Commissioner Barbosa's question about customarily associated functions. Ours is a house-museum. It's not your traditional museum of modern art or your Asian museum like we have in San Francisco. And so, I was thinking real quick, I'm like, all right, what facility can I think of that rents itself out? Filoli, a national trust property down in Woodside on the peninsula. And so, I pulled up the website, and I'll do a dramatic reading for you.
Can you get that over to our screen here?
Ooh. All right. Imagine a grandiose dinner in the already spectacularly decorated ballroom, a celebratory luncheon in the lecture hall, intimate affair in the garden house overlooking our elegant holiday light display, or an extravagant winter wonderland with dinner and dancing on the north lawn, or woodland garden court. Filoli is now booking holiday parties from 10 to 2,000 guests. Inquire now to secure your date. That's just one example. A house-museum is a slightly different beast than a traditional hang-it-on-the-wall kind of museum, and this is a very common use to have events rented out in the space. It's generally in the business considered to be a way to make it publicly accessible, as well as a financial fundraiser to support the building. So, that was my first one. And then I wanted to talk about Commissioner McDonald's question, which basically asked about accountability with the temporary use permit, asking for review conditions to make sure that once a year, we would come forward and talk about how we are or are not meeting the conditions of the use permit. And I just wanted to mention that those are, that kind of review is included in the conditions of use, or the conditions of approval for this use permit, that on a yearly basis, the league would have to submit a report of how many events were completed, how many people, and in that way be accountable for the use permit. And at that, I'm going to make myself available for questions.
Commissioner Barnett?
Thanks. A few questions for you. I noticed a list of, I guess there were in 2018, of the events that had in 2018, and that, my recollection was, it was like 14 or so. Do you anticipate that number? Do you anticipate more than that number going forward? Where does that fit into the plan?
It was 13, and we anticipate about the same, just based on the level of demand for the house. Our budget this year does have a slight increase in revenue from the house. We have a new, what to call her, Marissa Souza, she's our booking manager and event coordinator for the house. She, on a commission basis, manages event bookings and then the details of the actual event. She, based on other market research for how much other facilities were charging for similar spaces and similar events, has slightly increased our prices, so that we're looking to have, you know, a slightly higher income from about the same number of events.
Okay, and, so how much, you're talking about these funds necessary to support, I guess, both the organization and the cost of this property together. So, how much does it cost to support this property?
Well, aha. It's traditionally, our monthly burn rate has been between $1,500 and $1,800. So, this year, in our 2019 approved budget, we are looking at $20,000 for maintaining the house, and that does include some of the expenses that are associated with actually having events. We need to purchase some folding chairs, there's a little bit more landscape work that we need to do just to kind of spiffy it up, fix the water fountain, that kind of thing. But that is, that's what our budget has this year.
And that's, I assume, for things like garden maintenance and water and electricity?
Water, PG&E, garbage, Comcast, house cleaning, landscaping, equipment.
Okay, and so how much were you able to generate in that 2018 period off those 13 events or so?
Let me pull it up. Actually, I'm sorry, we don't have the overhead projector thing anymore, because I... No. Okay. So, let's see, you're asking what our income from the house has been?
Yeah, for the rental.
So, in 2018, we had the 13 events, and we made $30,924. And so, this year, we're projecting 35 for about the same number of events at a slightly higher price point. We're also targeting smaller events, using the conference room, where they can have 15 people around the table, or 25 in theater seating.
Okay. My last question is, in your proposal, the number of events that you propose that are possible is well beyond 13. I didn't take the time to add them all up, but it looked to me like it was going to be 30 or 40 potential events of all kinds. And so, I'm wondering, and I guess one of my concerns would be, what would the impacts be if you actually, I mean, you've got this commissioned person now out there to sell the property, maybe she's a go-getter, and plugged into the meeting planner community, and going to pump, 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 and, you know, what would be the impact if you actually had 30 or 40 events? Obviously, the financial impact would be great, but it's something that street hasn't ever experienced before.
Certainly, and I think that some of those issues are addressed in the timing requirements that are included in the conditional use permit, that there can be no more than so many of a certain size event on any given month, and not closer than certain numbers of weeks, and it's very specific about how close they could be. And we are very sensitive to our neighbors. We have never been a nuisance, and we certainly don't plan to become a nuisance to our neighbors. We like to think that we are adding some benefit to the street, as well as the city in general, and we certainly don't want to risk upsetting either close-by neighbors or distant neighbors.
And let me just ask one last question. I walked to the property the other day, hadn't been out there in a while, and my memory didn't, hadn't served me well. I remembered the shack that's in the undeveloped portion of the property, between your fenced portion of the garden and the baton courts on the other side of the fence adjacent to Depot Park. And that undeveloped portion is, includes the boarded up, bordered up shack or cabin, or whatever one would like to call it, which just sort of breaks your heart, you'll look at it and go, gee. But, in any event, that notwithstanding, it looked to me like there was both access and the potential for parking in that undeveloped lot, that essentially, the grounds of it, I didn't measure it, but it looked to me to be at least, in terms of lot size, probably 75 or 100 feet wide by 150 feet deep. It's a large space could probably accommodate, if it were done really as a full-tilt parking lot, could accommodate 50 cars or more, if it were paved and striped and all the rest, but even just gravelled, you know, essentially, simply, simply landscaped and gravelled, could accommodate, you know, certainly for this facility only, on special events, 20, 30, 40 cars, without much difficulty and proper supervision back there when people are parking. Has there been any discussion between your organization and the city about some modest level of improvement of that undeveloped space? level of improvement of that undeveloped space?
No, there has not. And just to clarify, that parcel, which we call the Aguilon Cottage or the Masonavi Cottage, is not part of our lease with the city. And I know that there have been several proposals for redevelopment, restoration, renovation, adaptive reuse of that property, but nothing has been reached. Gosh, if we could get more parking spaces in downtown Sonoma, I think we would all be very happy.
Well...
Certainly. And if the Masonavi House could have exclusive rights to those parking spaces, gee.
Well, certainly, if it were, as I say, modestly developed so that it were just gravel, it doesn't have to be fully asphalt, but certainly it seems to me to be appropriate that parking could be restricted to the Masonavi House events on the days that you have events. Easy enough to post a person and a sign and, you know, nope. And so, once again, this is something that's beyond the purview of this commission, but normally parking is like the topic de jour before this body. And it seems to me that there's sort of a squandered opportunity here for a better use of an available space that's just not being used at all.
Dare I expand on your comment and say that this is a squandered opportunity for a better use of that whole property?
Yeah.
The building and the potential open space on it. But to redirect myself back to the parking question, traditionally, what we've done is parked in the Field of Dreams. The parking spot, it's half a block up First Street. There haven't been any problems with overflow parking or complaints from the neighbors.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
In terms of use of the kitchen on the property in connection with events, how have the wedding caterers prepared the food that they're serving?
It's usually brought on. The kitchen, if you've seen the house at all, it's, gosh, barely a butler's pantry. It has a sink, refrigerator, and a microwave. So there's certainly no facility for actually preparing food, much less a catering kitchen. So it has to be brought on.
I would also note that condition of approval three prohibits use of the kitchen for catering and things like that unless a proper approval is obtained by the county.
Our kitchen is more like a place to make coffee and get a glass of water. It's also part of the historic exhibit that's associated with the kitchen space outside of the little nook that has the sink.
Commissioner...
Hi, I have a question. It has to do with the subletter, the sublease.
Yes.
Maybe more specifically about larger events. I noted that in 2018, there was four events that were roughly the large ones that were non-league events that went up to 120. We have the capacity, though, with this use permit to have up to 12. And one of the concerns that I have, that I'd like to maybe elaborate on, has to do with the sublet and not having exclusive control over what another nonprofit may do with the property that would conform with this use permit. So what sort of restrictions or controls would you have as the leaseholder for these types of large events? And what sort of things could the city expect as a result of that?
Right. So is your question about large events that a sublessy would hold, or how large events staged by the league, not really by the league, but I guess on our behalf, would affect a sublessy?
It would be the first.
Okay. So ideally, the league's mission is not event planning, it is not venue management, it is not real estate management. Our mission is preservation advocacy, whether it's education or bricks and mortar. So in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to have events at all. In a perfect world, we would be able to share the expenses and cover the expenses with a sublessy. So in pursuing this permit right now, we're actually really going down two parallel paths. One is the existing condition of using the house for events to subsidize maintenance of the house and provide a small amount of income for our mission. And the other path that we're looking at is finding a roommate, and that's kind of how I like to think about it. We have, in years past, started conversations with other nonprofits that have similar missions, who shall go unnamed at the moment, but that would be really logical roommates for us. And ideally, that would cover the expenses, and there wouldn't be a need for having outside events. The events that would be held at the property would be member events for one or both of the tenants.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you may have a sublet to help supplement income, but that sublease, lessor would not necessarily be allowed to throw events that conform with the use permit. You still would be...
Absolutely. And as stewards for a historic building, it's our goal also to minimize wear and tear on this resource. These big parties, too many of them, gosh, too many of them do take a toll. Another reason why the idea of a roommate is a more sensitive approach to the long-term viability and protection of this resource. But the reality of it is that we don't have a roommate right now, or we don't even have the capacity to have one based on our current lease. So we do these events, and we try and, you know, keep it as quiet and calm and least impactful on the building as possible. But certainly, should we be able to go ahead and modify the lease to allow us to have a roommate at some future point, let me just clarify that that's not what we're asking tonight. But down the road, our long-term planning, if we were to pursue that option, we could certainly write into their agreement with the league and the city about how they could and could not have events at the property. That would be consistent with the conditional use permit.
So maybe this is a question for the city attorney or staff. Currently, the lease doesn't have any language for subletting the property, and that's something that would be an amendment to the lease. And is it your opinion that we could actually write specific language in that said that the subletter not actually be able to hold events, would basically be like subservient or, you know, whatever to the primary leaseholder?
So two things. It's a little, the lease itself says they cannot sublet unless written permission is granted by the city. That would have, written permission would have to come from the city council. Or a lease amendment that takes that requirement away. With regard to the question of whether or not the, any sublessy who's subsequently to the commission's action, approved by the city council, in accordance with this provision, you know, they're taking subject to whatever the permit that you may contemplate today and may grant provides. If it's essentially only the main tenant can conduct events, or only the uses of the main house can conduct events, I think you could impose that condition. Although, remember, running with the land, it's possible that a sublessy that was approved could be there by themselves at some point if, in fact, the main lessor were to leave. Having said that, I guess then they wouldn't be holding any events at all under those circumstances.
And I was just curious, under the 25-year lease that you hold, how many years have you held that lease?
What year was it?
The lease expires in 2026.
Okay, thank you, yes.
2026, so roughly seven more years the lease comes up.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If I could make a point of clarification, condition of approval number three, as before you right now, would limit special events to a maximum of six large outdoor events per year, no more than two per month. Other events would be limited to no more than 26 weekend events per year. In no case shall special events occur more than twice a week. There's several other provisions about hours of operation for the public, and no amplified noise. I mentioned about the kitchen not being used for special events. And Chair, did you have...
Yeah, and one thing I want to point your attention to, if this addresses it, and that is, there's a condition that requires the submission of an annual special event summary. And thinking here, that could be to staff, or it could be to the commission's review as well. So if the commission would like to see it and get the report, just to have a report in, we could try to set something up. It's a little bit funky, so I'm going to defer to Veronica if we've done that, if we can do that. I'm not quite sure whether this is an intent to have it to be just submitted to staff or whether it's a return back to the commission. Not that there's any limitation on the ability to continue the use, it's just a check-in.
Well, we have a precedent there with Sebastiani. When they have their Food Truck Fridays, they get a permission every year to do it, and they have to report back us at the end of that year to let us know how it went. So we seem to have a precedent.
Does that come back, Mr. Chair, if I can, educating David here, does that come back to the commission for a public meeting?
Yes.
But not a public hearing?
Just for a point of clarification, just to step back, in terms of the total number of events that could be up to 120, you were saying that it was limited to six?
There is a proposed condition of approval before you to limit them to six.
Oh, okay, so that's different than, what's the difference between that and Appendix C? Because that...
Appendix C is what, so under the lease, they kind of have this whole wish list of events. When you add all of those wish lists up, it's quite a large amount of events. So my attempt as staff to kind of put some framework on what would be allowable was to limit it. And so the condition of approval number three is my attempt at putting some framework on that. So to me, what was reasonable was six large outdoor events a year, which is in keeping with prior practices, but it puts a hard line on it for the neighbors so that they know it's not going to be four, you know, four weekend weddings every, you know, every month, every, all summer long. And then limiting kind of the overall total number of special events to 26 weekend events per year and in no case twice per week.
Oh, thank you, because I was looking at Appendix C, so I was looking at something that had a larger, a lot bigger scope. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, two additional things. The first is, I do recommend that relative to subsection G, which is before you, and the special event summary documenting compliance with the event limitations, that that condition should be amended to specifically state where that summary is coming. Is it going to staff? Is it coming back to the planning commission? Is it going to the city council? That should be more clear in this condition. Second, in further of the date that the lease expires of 2026, there is a provision for an option to extend the lease by two additional five-year terms, provided that the tenant is not in default. So it has the potential to go to 2036.
Commissioner Barbosa?
Apologize. I had another question I neglected to ask you. Lease provision 12 calls for the tenant to have liability insurance of $500,000 per person and $1 million per event. Do you know what the limits of the liability insurance the league carries are?
Mary. I'm pointing at our treasurer, and perhaps she'll know. Off the top of my head, I do not know. I know that when we do have events, we do require our renters, we require our visitors to carry insurance and include us as indemnified. So whether it's a specific, event-specific insurance or kind of an overall, I'm totally not sure what the number is.
And do you require them to also co-insure the city for those events?
I can look that up.
Okay. That's kind of an important point if you're having 120 people on the property drinking, and you only have $500,000 in liability insurance, and this is going to go out for another 20 years.
I can hand that off to our legal counsel. And I also wanted to, the number 120 is not really in line with the events that we like to hold at the house. Our marketing material caps it at 100. So I think 120 is, maybe it's a standard number, but in reality, when we are talking to people interested in renting the house for large events, we do cap it at 100.
Just let Veronica have a chance.
Sorry. In furtherance of Commissioner Barbosa's suggestion, I would suggest that the requirement for insurance may be appropriate to add as a condition of approval since the lease has several more years to go under its option period.
Could we also increase the liability limits as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to follow up on one thing about the total number of people per event, does that include, or does that exclude, like, caterers, musicians?
Well, that's a good point, yeah.
Is that all-inclusive, or...
That's guests, so you're absolutely right. By the time you put the caterers on there, it could hit 120. My oversight, I apologize.
But it's not exclusive, like, you could, you know, it's 120 guests versus 120 people?
We're trying to, again, you know, as stewards of a historic resource, we're trying to minimize, to the extent possible, the wear and tear on the facility. And the fewer people we can keep in it, the better. So it's not really our goal to host big raging parties. You know, we would like to have very small affairs that are, you know, very intimate and very non-impactful on our historic resource.
And I agree with you, and I applaud you. The thing is that this is a use permit that runs with the land and not with you, so that's why I'm asking so many questions and trying, because it's better to clarify this, because if we do approve a use permit, we're approving it for the property.
Agreed.
Thanks.
I'd like to open this up to the rest of the public, if I may, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tom Kennard, resident on York Court. So you've brought back plenty of memories tonight. I spent lots of nights and lots of nice days at the dinner table with Henry and my parents. I heard all about Henry wanting it donated to the city for public use at the time of his death. He never would have guessed that you would have wasted all of this time tonight on rules and regulations to do with it. I suggest you move forward and allow public use of the property. I think it's been ludicrous that the city has allowed the cottage to fall into such disrepair. It was, and I imagine still is, perfectly and affordably restorable. And what absurdity on top of that, I hear, that this organization has had to spend their own money to secure the well-being of the existing house. You really need to go back as city staff and as a commission and learn about the great man, Henry Masonavi, who was an incredible steward of all that you have here in Sonoma today, preserving the history that brought all or many of you here. He was totally responsible for. You really ought to go back and look at the original gift and the reasons for it would be a great thing for you all to learn. I know there's a couple of you that were here then. I can't say for more than that, however. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Tom.
David Eiker, Little McCourt. Full disclosure, my wife is a wedding florist, lavender floral, and I help her out with deliveries, and we've done some weddings at the property, and it's a lovely property. And the wedding parties is much smaller than at wineries, so it's not really a huge wedding when you compare it to what you get at the wineries or even some of the other hotels, such as Lodges Sonoma. And so I think we need to approve and allow the use of the property because we're trying, remember, we're trying to preserve the historic property that we have, the historic nature. And already in the city code, you have, for historic buildings, for preservation, renovation, you already allow vacation rentals to go in because you recognize the importance of a lot of this historic property, you want to continue around for the use. And in this case, it's more for a public use than, say... to continue around for the use. And in this case, it's more for a public use than, say, a vacation rental. So I think you should allow that. And I just did a quick Google search, wedding at museum, and you get, for reasons, you should have a wedding at a museum. 20 amazing museum wedding venues for every style. Top museum gallery wedding venues in Southern California. Top museum gallery weddings venues in Northern California. And then weddings at the Oakland Museum. So it does happen that a lot of museums do have weddings. I think especially if you have an outdoor, nice garden area, that's where a lot of people like to have weddings. So I hope you approve this with the proper conditions. You're asking a lot of good questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Mary Secconi, and I'm the treasurer of the Sonoma Leica Historic Preservation. And I just want to let you know that I've been doing this job for, or not job, because I'm a volunteer, but I've been in this position for over a year. And typically, it, the largest group, you know, the average group is about 50. You know, there are smaller weddings that do occur there, and there aren't that many. And to note also, the one, the Falkirk House in Centerfell also is an old building that they want to keep and maintain that historic nature, and there are weddings there all the time. And that, it's a beautiful way to have people appreciate history. And so they always usually leave appreciating history. So I think we're doing a good job on that. And I also have, the total for this year we brought in is $2,400. So there's not that much so far this year, but hopefully there will be more so we can keep paying our bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patty DeFern. I'm at 465 East MacArthur. I would like to especially thank Mr. Kennard for speaking about Mr. Mazanavi. I've been here for 41 years, and he was a great asset to this community. And anything that you can do to recognize and improve this property would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Anyone else? Seeing no one approach, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for further discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chair, while your commission is thinking of a few things there, I'll just suggest a couple of things to help frame the discussion. Number one, is possible amendments to condition 3G, which is, as Veronica said, does it come back to you? Does it come to staff? How would you like to do that? So that's point number one. Point number two is, we'd like to introduce some indemnification language that we'd like to suggest, and I'll have Veronica explain that because we need to change it out. And then number three is a new condition number four to increase perhaps the insurance provisions, as was discussed previously. So that will be the addition of a net new condition number four, if that needs to be framed.
Question for staff with regard to this issue of a sublease amendment to the lease. I would assume that the most that the commission can do is make a recommendation to the city council about that. It can't formally take any action in a motion to approve that tonight, am I right?
I'm not sure. I think that you even need to approve it. That's a question of who the occupier is, not whether or not the use permit allows additional office uses. So I think the use permit can allow an additional office use. And if it does, and the council does not approve a sublet, then that additional office use could be by the league but couldn't be by a subtenant. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Try that again.
I'll try to rephrase the answer then. The use permit is only allowing a type of use, office use. And certainly, it can expand the allowed office use to include additional areas of the property or building. The question of who may occupy it is not a question of the use permit, but is a question of the lease. And the city council could refuse to approve the occupancy of that area by a subtenant, which would mean the only party who could use it under the use permit would be the main tenant, the league.
Okay, so then, if I understand you correctly, what the commission would do tonight would be to consider the use permit and the matter of whether or not the league in the future chooses to sublease any portion of the space for an office use or any other use is a matter that they would have to bring up before the city council for approval?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
This is a discussion?
Yep.
Yeah, following up on that latter point and the need for a lease amendment, it seems to me that we could, whatever conditional use permit we might choose to pass or approve, we could include in it, the city council action would have to be taken to amend the lease in accordance with whatever we decide is needed. For example, the insurance liability limit increase. For example, the ability to sublet and assign with customary language to people who normally the lessor, which would be the city, has to approve sublets and it not unreasonably withheld. I mean, that kind of standard language seems to be appropriate, but we could, we just say we're granting this use permit, subject to the city council, abending the lease in accordance. Could we not?
Yes, and with regard to the language that's currently in the lease, it does not, how do I put this? The lease allows for just approval. It doesn't have to be amended to allow the subtenant to occur. In other words, the language currently says it can't be sublet without the written consent of the city. Consent shall not be unreasonably withheld. So it already has that language in it. If we want to, if the city council wants to eliminate that language and say they have carte blanche to sublease without approval of that subtenant, they could amend it. Otherwise, the council would have to approve each and every subtenant that they would bring forward.
Well, in accordance with what we heard from the league, I would like to amend the conditions of approval to also actually put a numeric limit on the size of the large outdoor events. Since they don't intend to go above 100, I think that's probably a good limit to put on it.
So that would be an amendment to this subsection A that is actually shown on the screen and is shown on your screens as well. Special events shall be limited to a maximum of six large outdoor events per year and no more than two per month. And then you would include a sentence that says, large events shall not exceed 100 guests? Or do you want to do 100 combined guests and service personnel?
I'm fine with guests.
Okay. Or attendees, I guess. Maybe they're not guests, they might pay, so attendees.
Are we getting close to somebody making a motion with all of these things that we're trying to put on the table?
If I may, Mr. Chair, the question of the indemnity provisions that are contained within the conditions of, can you scroll to that condition? Conditions of approval. Unfortunately, there was a cut in, I guess, I'll call it a cut-and-paste error. The indemnity condition added, go further, in subsection, there we go, A, is actually the indemnity provision for a subdivision map approval, and refers to the subdivision map act. So it is the, unfortunately, the wrong language. Did you pass this out to the commission? With regard to that, the passed-out language, the language that was passed out to you at the dais, should instead be used A through F. And with that, I would ask that you substitute that language for the language that is contained in the packet.
Unless I'm mistaken, this is the one you're talking about, right? This refers to developer?
You can change the word to applicant. Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to take a stab at some conditions for you, as I've heard you discuss. And if you can say, if there is a motion, you can say, yeah, what David said, or if I've not got it right. So I want to try to just make a couple.
Thank you.
Thoughts? So on condition number, well, there would be a modification to condition number two that includes the language that Veronica just spoken about with the change to applicant. Number three, the condition number three A would add the language to the end of the sentence with no more than, and with no large event, having more than 120 attendees.
100.
100 guests.
Sorry, thank you.
110.
100 guests. And then G, 3G, would say, the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation shall submit an annual special event summary documenting compliance with the event limitations, submitted to the planning director for his subsequent scheduling of the report or annual report to the planning commission, something of that, in that nature. And then there will be a net new condition number four, where I would need language if you choose to talk about the increase in insurance provisions.
Well, unless we increase, unless we just pick a limit, like $2 million per person or a maximum, I mean, I'm just thinking, I was a landlord, I had $2 million in liability insurance. So I only had people living in the house, but...
So new condition?
Yeah, I mean, or we could let the city council do it, that the, since apparently this has to go to the council anyway for something, that we could just say you set the liability limits, or maybe the city attorney would like to make a recommendation as to what those limits should be. But 500 per person, 1 million total, is woefully inadequate by current standards. So they need to be appropriate, and we need to make sure that all users of this property obtain their own insurance and name the city as an additional co-insured. So with those two things, I feel comfortable with these large events, given that I've been educated about customary museum weddings. But I do think we need to be financially protected from these large events.
I do think with regard to the fact that the tenants or the events are being allowed as a result of this use permit, that an appropriate condition in the use permit is certainly to require the, I'm going to call it sublessi, because the event person is licensing or leasing the premises from the, from the current lessi, if you will, so that anyone holding an event would be required to both have insurance. I would say it should be up to $2 million per occurrence, and that that insurance should name the city as an additional insured with endorsements acceptable to the city.
Could we make that, rather than just per occurrence, single limit policy with a $2 million, so that if it's only one person, they could still, it still could apply those higher limits, rather than per occurrence?
That's fine, and it should be an occurrence-based policy as well, since we don't want them to have to carry it beyond the date of the rental.
Where did we leave the discussion about exploiting parking at the cottage parking lot? How did that end up, that Commissioner Barnett brought up?
Totally gone.
It was, it was really a suggestion on my part, and just that at this point. Okay, so there's no, there's no current thinking about adding that?
There's no way we can add that to this discussion.
All right.
I'm looking for a motion.
A move we approve the use permit with the amendments previously recited and discussed. Second.
If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Malander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohar?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Yes.
Chair Felder?
Yes.
The motion was unanimously approved, 6-0.
6-0. Thank you. That only took us an hour and a half.
Do we have to speed up?
Yes, we have to speed up.
And go to the bathroom.
Okay, two-minute break. Two-minute recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. And with that, we will move on to item 7.2, which is a use permit modification application to expand the existing beer and wine bar located at 452 First Street East, Suite G, into the adjoining Suite J in conjunction with a parking exception. This will be Wendy Atkins.
Thank you, Chair Felder, and members of the commission. The speakeasy is located in the Mercado currently in Suite G. The Mercado is located across from the Plaza on the east side. The applicant would like to expand into Suite J, which is located just to the east of Suite J. Sorry, Suite J. Suite J, sorry, Suite G. The expansion would take the form of a 200-square-foot office and storage area, 180-square-foot feet of additional dance area, and five additional seats. Would go from 28 current seats to, sorry, 10 additional seats, it would go from 28 to 38 total. In addition, after the staff report was distributed, staff learned that the applicant would like to use five outdoor seats in the patio area here. The applicant has stated that patrons may bring drinks out into the patio area, but there is no outdoor service. A security guard is posted at the front door, which prevents, prevents drinks from leaving the patio area, and the outdoor seating would fall within the ABC license. By way of background, a wine tasting room existed on the site for, for many years until 2015. In 2012, a music venue license was approved by this commission, and then subsequently in 2015, a use permit was approved to confirm, convert the wine tasting room to an entertainment venue and a beer and wine bar, which is a type 42 license. With regard to the music venue license, the expansion of Suite J is a land use application, and it must be approved prior to modifying the music venue license. To address the music venue license, staff recommends that the commission approve the following additional condition of approval, that the music venue license is approved on or at the premise of the use permit, so that would cover Suite G and Suite J. In 2015, there was a motion to approve the application for a use permit to convert the, the use from a wine bar to, a wine tasting facility to a wine and bar, wine and beer bar. And a condition of approval was added at the meeting to close the business at midnight and specified a maximum of 33 seats, but unfortunately, this condition of approval did not make it into the record, so at this time, staff's recommending the commission modify the, the conditions to reflect this information. So I have the revised condition of approval number one on the screen. One C proposing to remove the words on Monday through Wednesday and by 1:00 a.m. on Thursday through Sunday, so the bar will close by midnight. The bar shall be limited to a maximum of 33 seats and five outdoor seats unless further modified by the commission, and that the music venue license is approved on or at the premise of the use permit. And I'd also like to mention that the indemni, indemni, indemni.
Demnification.
Indemnification, thank you, condition, template would also need to be changed. And in order to approve the use permit to expand into Suite J and to allow outdoor seating, there are certain findings that must be made, and that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any brief questions for staff?
Could I please get clarity on, on seat numbers, because I'm seeing them all over the chart, because I see them at 24 seats on the detailed background, and I see just five additional seats. Now I'm hearing 33 indoor and now five outdoor, so.
Right.
Where should I focus?
So in 2015, the planning commission approved a maximum of 33 seats.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, 28 seats.
Twenty-eight.
Thirty-three in 2015.
Thirty-three, thank you, 33 in 2015.
Okay.
The applicant would now like to have 38 seats inside and five outdoors. Thank you.
That, that adds up to 40.
Yeah, that's not what you said previously.
You said in the conditions, you showed us 33 inside and five outside.
Right. That's what the condition was updated from, okay. And, sorry, in 2015, the planning commission approved 33 seats, so the condition of approval was changed to reflect that. So, so the applicant is asking for in addition to this 33 seats, to have 38 indoor seats and five outdoor seats.
That's not what your condition that you just put up on the screen says.
Right. And I'm making that change, and the applicant can speak and confirm this, to make sure that I'm correct at that. Well, we'll have to, wait, we'll have to wait to open the public.
Wait till we open the public hearing, please. Well, let, can we get staff's recommendation for what the condition of approval is supposed to be based on your understanding of your discussions with the applicant?
Yes, it, this applicant, this condition should read, "The bar shall be limited to a maximum of 38 indoor seats and five outdoor seats."
Okay.
That's wrong on the screen.
Thank you.
All right, we have the ability to modify that as we so choose. One other thing that I'd like to get in the record is that since the music license must be renewed if there's a new owner, is it your understanding that the ownership has not changed since the music permit was issued in 2012?
That's correct.
No, it has.
I would like to have some clarification from the applicant, because in their narrative, they talk about themselves being new owners.
Well, sir, we can get some clarification from the applicant, I would just say, state that the application to change the ownership of the music license for the smoke, for the speakeasy, the applicant name was Judy Stevens, and that's the, the current applicant for this application. Sorry, Jody. Sorry.
More questions?
Yes.
Okay.
In the staff?
I'm sorry, Wendy, in the staff report, it said that an exception, a parking exception is not required, because staff determined that, I'm wondering how staff determined that.
Sure, so back in 2000, let's see, 15, the use permit to convert the use from the wine tasting facility to the wine and beer bar, staff at that time determined that there was adequate parking available for 33 seats.
Right.
And if you increase the seats from 33 to 38, that would be five seats and would require one additional parking space, and staff determined that the proposal would not increase the parking demand, and a parking exception wouldn't be required.
No, I, okay, so I'm just, so if you, if they can only have 33 seats, but they're asking for 38 or potentially 43, wouldn't they need an exception?
Well, staff determined that there was adequate parking on site, you know, there's a, a large parking lot in back, that there would be.
No, I, why, how does, how does that work then? Because I assume that we would make the exception because they had adequate parking. Does that make sense? Am I? Right. I mean, I'm more than happy to make the exception from what I've read in the staff report, I'm just wondering, because it's over the limit, why we wouldn't be making the exception.
The planning commission can require a parking exception, and if they can make the findings, can approve that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll ask the applicant if they would like to step forward. Are you looking to, to clarify something before we do that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can, so there's that question about the parking that's not been noticed.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, was, as an exception?
Well, the, assuming the notice and the agenda item title matched, the agenda item title says, "Expansion into the adjoining suite located at, oh, truncated Suite J in conjunction with a parking exception." So it, it does say that a parking exception is being considered by the planning commission at tonight's meeting. The question of expanding the music venue license into the adjacent suite, however, does not appear to be included.
Well, and I still have a question about whether the music license is still valid.
So, so what Wendy was reading from previously contained within the file was Agenda Item Two from your meeting date, this commission's meeting date of March 10th of 2016. That was an action on an application of Ms. Stevens to change the ownership of the music venue license for the speakeasy in accordance with the municipal code. Section 5.34, Chapter 5.34 of the municipal code, provides a process under 5.34090 for a change of ownership and how a change of the license or transfer of the license to a new owner is processed.
Okay, so that took place not at the, that took place in 2016?
Correct.
And the original license was issued in 2012?
I, I'd have to go back and look in the file to see what the original license was.
So in 2016, you're saying there was a change of ownership and the music license was transferred to the new owner?
There, you considered it, I'm going to assume for the sake of argument, you approved it, since there are conditions of approval attached in the file issued March 10, 2016.
Would the applicant like to step forward and try to clarify some of this? Please state your name.
Gary Bizani.
Thank you.
Yes, and we own the speakeasy, me and my wife, Jody Stevens. We did come in front of the board on 2000, we bought the business, not the building, we bought the business, February 8, 2016. So March is when we came in here and changed the ownership and the music license over to Jody Stevens.
Thank you.
Okay, and in the meantime, because my lease was so short, I really didn't want to buy the building, but we bought the building, okay, because I couldn't do as much as I wanted to to the place. I did put a lot of money in already. We never, we had 34 seats, I'm sure it was 34 seating when we talked about it, so I'm not bickering over one seat. It's always had outdoor seating, always, it's always been there. Nobody served out there, like I said, and, but everything's changed here, I mean, it's always been Thursday, Friday, and Saturday open till 1:00. We usually never open till then, but I don't know why that's being crossed out as a condition. Why? I, I mean, we, we have, when we're open that late, the musicians are already gone, so I can see music only till 12:00. Sometimes on the weekends, people like to stay there a little wait later, you know, so. And, yeah, and the other thing we're talking about here is we're adding 12 feet to the bar, you know, that's this much by 16. It's hardly anything, this, it makes the stage a little bit bigger, because musicians are complaining they're falling off the stage, because it goes at an angle. It's a very small place. We cater to 40 and up. I'll bet you 60% of our people in there are over 60, and that's what we have. Our, our best dancer is Craig Thompson, he's 84 years old. I have never had a black month there yet. I bought this place and did it for my wife, she's a musician, she sings. We're providing a service for everybody in town to come there, we're very nice to everybody. The one complaint that's on here about keeping the door closed, those neighbors behind here, that gentleman, he called himself Mr. Fitzpatrick, and he also said that he made the noise, whatever the, the noise ordinance here in Sonoma County, on, on the square. They came over the one night, and he said, "You guys are really loud," he was being very nice at first, and I said, "Oh, I had the door open, my fault, I left the door open." The door is always closed, we have air conditioning, why would we leave it open? Okay? I apologized to him, and told him, "I just had heart surgery, so I haven't been here in a while, I'm sorry if it's been open." And he turned, turned around and said, "Well, I have prostate cancer." I'm not trying to, you know, have some kind of contest with you, I just said, I'm, we're trying to be really nice. My wife came out, and she was trying to give her, her business card, say, "Please call us if there's ever a problem. Please call us, we'll turn it down or whatever, you know, we want to keep everybody happy back there." And we said, "You got to remember, Murphy's is loud and Bergerson Vine, too." So then he walked over to Murphy's, and he came back and said, "You're lying, they're not making any noise." They were closed for three, for like a week or something remodeling. So, and then he went to the city council and complained somewhere here, because she got a call to keep the door closed, and we said, "We do." So that's not an issue to keep the door closed all the time. The two houses are back there, the 453, which is mentioned on here, none of them have, they don't even have thermal ping windows, they have to hear every car going by. So, you know, those aren't even legal to have anymore, you have to have thermal ping windows. So that's all I have to say, is I'm just trying to keep the place, make it, maybe break even.
Okay, thank you, and just, just so you understand, there's confusion up here, because we're getting a, a lot of different numbers that don't seem to match up, and we're just trying to understand what the numbers really are.
Well, I'll explain where it started at. Started at my capacity number is 34, right on the wall, okay? I went by the square footage, that's where I got 10 more people from. I says, "I want to add this, so we have, can allow 10 more people." So there's really only four half booths, if any of you have been in there, there are just booths along the wall with tables. So you may get four on each side, it may be eight people, really. Technically, I probably could only get eight people in there more. So it's not that big an issue, I would just like to be allowed to have a few more people.
So, let me just be clear, have you clarified, what are you actually asking for, for seating?
10 more seats.
What is the total number?
So if, if she said originally it was 33, then it's 43, but if she wants to count the outdoor and indoor, doesn't matter. The outdoor was always there, it had nothing to do with the indoor, but I, I don't know.
So we're looking at 43 seats, five of which are outdoor?
Yeah.
Forty-three plus the five.
Forty-two plus five, right?
No, that's not what I just heard.
No, that's what, she's writing in there, I asked for the, I had nothing, I just told her there was two benches out there that used to be there, they're not even there now, but I'm going to put something back there. But that was added, my original thing I asked for was 10 more seats, wasn't Wendy, was 10 more seats.
And how many are inside now?
There was 34, there was 34.
Right, so 44 plus five outside.
Yeah, with, that's, you know, that, I don't know, that counts, I guess, I, I, so in other words, before it had, then it had 34, it had 39 before, or something, you know, I don't get it.
It was outside, so we, we hadn't.
I never counted the outside, so I never knew that was part of the seat.
I, I thought I read in, in the minutes from 2015 that the motion that was approved was for 33 seats.
Yes, that's correct.
And that doesn't distinguish between indoor and outdoor?
I can't find a record that the planning commission ever, has ever approved any outdoor seating.
Which I don't think they need to, right? If it's a smaller percentage of the indoor.
If it's only 25% or less?
For businesses that sell alcohol, they do.
Oh, okay.
Sell it there. They don't serve people outside.
Right, but you can take a drink and buy it inside and go sit outside, and so that raises issues.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I love the speakeasy. Just want to clarify that we make sure we understand fully what you're asking for, so that we, what we deliver to you is what you want, or at least that's the discussion we have. You're looking at expanding the dance floor, making it a little bit more roomy for people, adding 10 additional seats, so now we're looking at 44, and do you want to put in a request for how many outdoor seats? Because it looks like we're going to have to do that.
Well, if we put it the way I, I said 10 seats before.
Well, if we put it the way I, I said 10 seats before, but the boost, there's only eight. So two of them, let's say they're outside seats, so let's put three more outside, and then I guess that's an additional request for three more seats than I, the original request, so it'd be 47. Does that make sense to everybody?
Forty-four in and three out.
Yes, because that, that just sounds like it makes sense, right?
Well, I don't think we can really stop people from moving chairs outside either, right? I mean, I think, I think if you get hot and you're going to go outside and cool off, that's what people do, they go out there not because they don't want to be part of the Speakeasy and hear the music, but they go outside because they're hot, right? And they want to cool off a little bit.
And we have a doorman, and that's even going to be different because the new plans, we're soundproofing the whole place, there's going to be, it's a special ventilation fan that my structural engineer said I had to have. It's another fan that goes in when it gets a little hot, and they're, like, the dance floor just is what makes it hot. And it's all redesigned. We put a firewall above which, because I had to get architecturally drawn plans, so $9,000, I decided, "Well, let's finish the place, I'm not going to get this drawn just to remove a petition wall." So I'm soundproofing the whole place, it gets double drywall with this green special glue between it, triple drywall by the stage, and then I'm also above, there's 14 feet up to the, to the roof, I'm soundproofing that because it just goes, you know, it can't really go over to, this is closed, but I want it fireproofed, not soundproofing that, fireproofing that.
And for that area, the patio area, it can be quite a bottleneck for people coming and going. What is the plan for that area so that it's not such a bottleneck, so that there's better flow?
Okay, well, if you saw in the plans, the, the problem we had, the, the kind of bottleneck there was the musicians going in in between bands. That's when you had a lot of, because there's equipment, their musical equipment is outside a lot of times. There's a side entrance that takes all that, and then they have storage for their equipment behind the stage. If you've seen the plan, there's a little office and the other part's storage. So all that's going to alleviate a whole bunch of problems we have. That has a handicap access ramp to the stage, it's all accessible now, it's all, going to be handicap accessible, it has to be. So by bringing up this, this to code, this building was a disaster to start with. Even the electrical panel, which when I bought the building, I thought was mine, thus, that's been paying for the power for that. So that's all in the plans, I, I have to go back to the main panel and do the new service for both, so it's, it's a lot entailed there. That was sold to me like that, but we're just, I'm not a whiner of spilt milk, just take care of the problem, it's not worth it to me, so. It's going to be a real beautiful project now, and we're going to have a coppered ceiling in it also. Let you make it nice.
Quick question, in terms of the increase, you're not adding that many square feet of space?
No.
I, I'm trusting that that's going to be acceptable to the fire marshal in terms of occupancy load?
Oh, absolutely. Because we went by the footage, Joe figured it out for me.
Okay.
He said how many were. Plus, he could actually, he could actually add more because I have a rear exit now, okay? It didn't have that before, so it has a rear exit right out there, emergency exit, so that raises your occupancy also.
Any other questions?
Well, I think you run a really nice spot there, I stop in every once in a while.
Thank you.
Got a question about, about parking, though. I have a, I, I live nearby, so I walk, but I, I suspect yours is probably a destination for people, want to come down there, pretty cohesive, friendly crowd. I'm guessing they all park on, in the square somewhere and walk in, is there, do you agree with that or not?
No. I think, I think, I'll bet you 50% walk. Most of our people are real, live close by.
Okay.
Or they take a cab there and they Uber home, because you got, you know, the sheriff's around, you'll get a DUI in a second. So a lot of them, you know, when they're coming to and from the bar, that parking lot is never full at all at night, unless it's Tuesday night market, and all those cars aren't supposed to be there.
When you say the parking lot, you mean the Mercado?
Mercado parking lot.
Mercado parking lot.
There's 61 spaces there in three handicaps, but what I'm saying is, is the only time that parking lot is full at night, and it's still not totally packed, but earlier in the day, you know, if you were maybe at 6, 7, and 8, then people start leaving. But that's the only day it's parked, is that Tuesday night market, and they're legally parked. That's just Mercado parking, it's not for the Tuesday night.
Well, I guess, when I was driving at, do you think your customers lean towards parking in a Mercado parking lot and walking in through the back? Do you think they actually use that?
The ones that go there actually use that.
I'm sorry?
Some of them park in the street, it depends, they walk up, so, can I tell, you know what I mean? They could be parked at Bergerson Vine or Swiss or anywhere and walk, it's possible, but I really don't think they park in the street. I think we get, a real high percentage just walk in, they're just walking from.
Let's stay on point. They have parking, a private parking lot for Mercado, and whether their patron uses it or not is immaterial.
Question for staff.
Yes.
Question for staff on the conditions of approval for the time of operation, because there was a little confusion on that point. Are we permitted to say, one, they can stay open till 1:00 on that weekend nights, but the music stops at 12, as the applicant just stated?
Yes.
Okay.
Could do that.
Hey, thank you very much, is there anybody else from public who would care to speak?
Jody Stevens, Sonoma resident, Sonoma Speakeasy owner. Thank you very much for hearing us today. Mainly, we really just want to make it a nice destination for the community to be able to come together and, you know, share some music and make it a good experience for anyone that comes into our town, bringing professional level musicians from all over the country, Bay Area and everything. We have been voted best music venue in Sonoma for three years in a row, and even in the North Bay Bohemian, got recognized for best music. We've also done lots of work for our community, raising around $10,000 for fire survivors the last few years, also, at least, you know, in the thousands for, like, FISH SOS and other things in community, in this community, because we do care about it, and we just want to make everyone happy and continue to just bring a beautiful place for people to enjoy, and of course, want to be respectful to our neighbors and, and all your wishes to make everything how it should be, and that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
David Iker, well, the secret is out, there's a hidden room behind the Sonoma Speakeasy, who to thunk? You know, so my wife and I have attended a few of the music sessions there, and I think it's really a, a great venue for the local musicians to get together. And since the performances are in the evening, we have never had any issue with parking. And so, yeah, Tuesday night is farmer's market, and so I don't, I believe they weren't doing music on Tuesday nights anyway, so I don't think parking would be a good concern. And anyway, the other two-thirds of my, what I had written down, the staff already took care of, so the, oh, the only other thing I had here is that when you step outside, you really can't hear the music that much, really not that loud, and the music at Murphy's is louder than the music coming out from the Speakeasy.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Can't resist, can you, Patty?
I cannot resist. Patty DeFern, 465 East MacArthur. I'm one of the owners of the Mercado, I own Shoe Guinery at this point, and I've been there since 1994. And I brought this to show you, although Jody said, best place for live music, Sonoma Speakeasy. And I don't know if you are really aware, but ever since the fire, we've had a really difficult time for merchants in Sonoma. Total Look, which is one of the best, and Angelique for shopping, Half Pint, best children's store in the North Bay, and right around the corner, part of it is Lisa Christine, who's an international artist. They all say it's been really slow. It's been a great benefit for us to have Speakeasy. I don't know anything about the parking, except that I'm the one that watches because there's a development coming in behind us, and we're afraid that they'll be parking in our lot. When I'm there in the evening, there's maybe three cars there. I think a lot of them do walk. The only concern that I have is that you do set the, the amount of the people and that you go with the fire marshal, because it is a narrow entrance to get in there, but they did add space, which was allotted for in our parking lot, so I don't know that that's a concern at all. And we are adding the fire door so that it's not just one entrance and exit, which is a great thing. The only thing I would like to say for staff, and I've talked to Gary a lot, and some of the things that have been required of him from the city is onerous and picky un, when it comes to maybe changing a light fixture, they're requiring him to do a drawing of that, and it seems to me that I think we need to take a look at some of the requirements that are happening in the city right now, so that we can do these kinds of things and these kinds of businesses can grow. So I say, thanks for being here, you all need to come, and thank you all for working for Sonoma.
Thank you, Patty.
Hey, Tom Gennart again. So, I think we should all count our chickens lucky tonight. We no longer have a full-scale supermarket on the plaza. We should stop worrying about a few parking spots for a small business, bringing tax dollars in, helping out the people that live here. Well, just think about what it might be with a supermarket on the plaza again. Do any of you remember a supermarket on the plaza? One?
Played for the Food City.
Two?
Little League team.
Yeah, I mean, we know, yeah, we know about it.
Yeah. You know, we didn't have the foresight when we allowed that to be developed. To keep the parking lot, we built more buildings on it.
Wasn't it originally a roller rink?
It was originally a roller rink, yes. It was the last and the only supermarket in the state with hardwood floors. It was a beautiful place. Joe Jugoli ran a beautiful business there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Bring it back to the commission for a discussion and hopefully a motion, if we can figure out what the conditions are.
Well, just as a comment, it's an outstanding place to go. I've been there a number of times, never seen a parking issue at all. In the back parking lot, there's, as Patty just stated, likely three cars there during the period, and there's music. But this is a real asset to our community, and I, I think we should definitely grant this permit, I think we should allow them the 44 indoor seats, the three or the outdoor seats that they requested, close the music at 12:00 a.m., but allow the bar to stay open till 1:00 a.m. on the weekends, that would be Thursday through Sunday, and approve the permit, subject to all the other conditions.
You can make that a motion.
And that's a motion.
I'll second it.
Can I, I'd like to just augment that a little bit. I don't want to limit them to just three outdoor seats, if they do something like a bench or something that makes sense, and it's more room for people to go outside and cool off, I think that we shouldn't be limiting that. So I'd like that, I'd like to have a little more flexibility rather than three seats outside, maybe, and I don't know what the space is, but maybe we could give a little bit more liberty on that to just.
It's a small area out there, but it could accept like three round cocktail tables with two chairs each. Then at least somebody could stand at those or something, because people do, they get tired of dancing or something, they want to come outside for a minute, if possible. I don't want to push anybody's buttons, I just want to get back in business, having closed for three and a half months.
We were ready to give you a five, but you gave, you cut yourself back to three, so let's put you back up to five.
Okay.
How about, how about six?
Six would be good, two, four, six, three, ten.
Three times two, yeah.
Motion amended.
All right. I'll accept that change.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohar?
Aye.
Commissioner Barbosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Aye.
And Chair Felder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Chair Felder, just, I apologize, just a point of clarification. Wendy mentioned, but you did not include specifically in your motion the substitution of the indemnity conditions, the same as the last agenda item, so I just wanted to clarify that your motion and the vote included those.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I don't believe we required any parking exception, we seem to allow that parking lot was sufficient. Do we need to?
Well, can I make a brief comment on that, at the risk of extending this? I think it's bad precedent to say that a, a project doesn't require an exception that is, you know, four to five spaces over, based on a self-done parking study in February. At this location with a parking lot, and we, as discussed, know that the, you know, most Mercado retailers are during the day, it's a sort of time shift for the parking lot, it makes a lot of sense, and those are all great reasons to make an exception, but I think we should be making exceptions.
So you're moving to amend the motion?
I am.
Second.
And my, you know, you know what my motion was?
I believe the motion was that the, the approval would include an exception that no additional parking would be required.
Okay.
Can we just add that to the original motion, or do we have to vote on a new motion?
Well, you need to vote on the amendment to the motion, yes.
Okay, all right. We will take a vote on this, roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohar?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Aye.
And Chair Felder?
Yes.
Motion was unanimously approved, 7-0.
Okay, I think we're done with that item.
May I ask a matter of procedure?
Yes.
At least, and maybe the rules have changed, but in the past, in a situation like this, where there was already a unanimous vote in an original motion, the chair would say, "Is there any one opposed?" And hearing no, hearing no, no vote opposed, then declares the motion passes by unanimous vote.
Let me, let me stop you right there, Commissioner. The reason that I am going to a roll call vote every time is that we are now doing action minutes, which the only other recourse is to go back and watch the tape, and to make sure that the action minutes properly record the vote, it's much easier to have it in the record on the tape as to what the vote was, and that's why we're doing that. And the council has taken that direction, and we are taking the same.
Okay, thank you.
An additional point of clarification, about four or five years ago, there was a case that required roll call votes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we did that in less than an hour. Item 7.3, this is going to be a tentative parcel map application of Paul Klassen for a tentative parcel map to subdivide a parcel into two lots at 481 York Court, including an action to prove a categorical exemption, and it's Wendy Atkins to give us the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Felder, members of the commission. The existing parcel has an area of .47 acres. With the addition of a small triangular-shaped portion of property on the adjoining site, the resulting two parcels would total just over half an acre. The subject property is currently developed with a residence, a detached carport and barn, and a shed. The proposed subdivision would divide the property... The proposed subdivision would divide the property into two lots. Parcel A, fronting York Court, would have an area of just over 12,000 square feet. Parcel B would front the private driveway, would have an area of just under 10,000 square feet. The existing residence on Parcel A is proposed to remain in its current configuration. The applicant has not yet prepared a plan to develop, to develop Parcel B. With regard to development code consistency and lot width and depth, I'd like to make a correction to the staff report. So thanks to a concerned member of the public, brought to my attention that I had incorrectly stated the lot width and dimensions in the staff report, and now I have an opportunity to make that correction. So lot width is actually measured at a point midway between the front and the rear property lines. So the existing parcel has a lot width of 186 feet, and the resulting parcel A would have a lot width of 104 feet, and the resulting parcel B would have a lot width of 82. Lot depth is the average linear distance between the front and the rear lot lines, and the existing parcel has a lot depth of 112 feet, and the resulting parcel A would have a lot depth of 112 feet, and the resulting parcel B would have a lot depth of 109 feet. Both the lot width and the depth meet the minimum requirements. With regard to floor area ratio and coverage, the low-density residential zoning district has a .35 FAR standard and a site coverage standard of 40%. The parcel A would have a floor area ratio of .33 and a lot coverage of 20%. The parcel B would be determined at a later date during the review of the building permit process. With regard to setbacks, a front setback is required at 20 feet. The side setbacks are seven feet minimum and 18 feet combined, and the rear is 20 feet. And the existing residence on Parcel A would maintain a minimum 26-foot front setback, minimum 16-foot side setback, and a minimum 30-foot rear yard setback. And the setbacks for the parcel B would be determined through the building permit process. The project was subject to an arborist report, and there were a total of 44 trees on the site. 25 trees are recommended for removal, and the tree committee reviewed the arborist report and determined that future tree removals shall be required, shall require a project-specific arborist report during the building permit process. With regard to project issues, the project's going to be subject to the subdivision design and improvement requests, and also the county sanitation division's requirements subject to sewer. So there are certain findings the planning commission must make in order to approve a tentative parcel map, and that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions to staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Paul Claussen, on behalf of the H&amp;M Claussen Trust. My parents originally bought this property in 1960, and it was about two and three-quarters acres from Fifth Street East to Fourth Street East. Fourth Street East didn't actually exist at that time, and it's where I grew up and my two brothers and my sister. And it's now in the trust, and so as part of the trust, we're needing to divide the properties between four people, and so one of the reasons we're doing this is so there's more properties, so we can equal out division of properties to the four people. And the project in 1979, late 70s, Condiati built York Court and all the houses to the, to the north. And as part of that, my parents subdivided their property for the houses on the south side of York Court. It originally had 11 lots in that area. However, the property line between two of the lots went right through the old farmhouse that we grew up in, and so my parents decided to combine those two lots and just keep that as one lot. And that's the area that's being proposed to be subdivided with this project. And actually, those, all those lots were shown in the tentative map back then in 1979, and the sewer and water services for both lots were installed as part of the development, so those already exist. So instead of having the pie-shaped lots that would have required removal of the house, we're asking to do a flag lot that will allow us to preserve the existing residence and the barn that's on that property. And that pretty much is it from our end. I can answer any questions you have, and Chad Mall of Bear Flag Engineering is here to prepare the tentative map.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone have questions? The applicant? Seeing, oh, yes.
Is that far away now on this?
Hi. I, I had, it's a lot of work to go through this tree inventory and match up the tables with the numbered map and the recommendations, and to be honest, I haven't gone through the process of doing that. I guess my basic question is, how many significant trees, because, you know, a plum tree, it's pretty, but it's not a significant tree. How many significant trees do you think are going to have to end up being removed?
It depends what you call significant tree, I guess. There's probably four trees that are remaining from when I was a child that are, that are there. Maybe one of those might need to be removed. There is, there is a large Monterey pine tree that would be removed because it's kind of in the middle of the building, building pad. It's, it's large, but it's, it was, didn't exist when I was, when I was a kid, and there's a couple that have to be removed for the driveway to go back. And there's, and then a couple other recommended were, I think, based on health issues.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions of the applicant, would anyone else from the public care to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
I have a question for staff, real quick. How is site coverage determined? I see Veronica laughing. My question is, I mean, my question, well, I mean, that was my question, but it's sort of, if, if the definition of site coverage isn't changed in a development code update or whatever, Parcel B is going to have a road on it for most of, you know, the entrance, and it could significantly reduce the potential building pad? And I just, well, I guess the first question is, for Parcel A, how is that coverage calculated?
The building footprint.
Okay, so not all the pavement?
Not all the pavement.
Okay. Okay.
Can I provide clarification?
Yes.
As part of, when, when my parents sold the other lot that's adjacent to them to the west, there was an agreement for a joint access easement. It was never recorded, but it's, the driveway that goes in will be shared with 461 and the new lot that's going to be created, 471. And so that's a shared driveway. It will be widened a bit for fire protection access, EVA, and so, so it is being minimized somewhat by shared driveway, most of which is in, we'll be adding about six feet for the length of the, of the flag pole.
Does that driveway already exist?
Uh, yes.
To the property to the west?
To that property to the west, yeah, 461.
So you just really only be adding?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is it completely on your parcel, the driveway?
The driveway is going to be six feet on, on 461 York Court, the property to the west.
Oh, I see, okay, I see it right here.
And 14 feet to get the 20 feet for fire will be on, on the pole of the flag.
Okay, thank you.
We're not looking to pave it like that other project on Fifth Street down there behind Estimadera, if you're familiar with that.
Yeah.
It's all pavement.
I just only bring that up, and perhaps, I mean, I don't know what your timeline is in terms of building this.
We don't have a timeline on it. We're, we're basically doing this to preserve the old farmhouse, and my younger brother is going to probably take that property, that's the plan now. My sister may take the back piece, the flag, but the cost of the subdivision may prohibit her from being able to do that.
We've just had a issue when it comes to site coverage versus coverage and the calculations, and sometimes that includes the paved area, and there are limits, and so if you do include the paved area, it would reduce the potential building pad, unless that's changed, and that's why I was asking how Parcel A was calculated. It's not really an issue for tonight, but it could be. Right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public here to speak? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission for a discussion and possible motion. Anyone want to start?
I, I believe that, my only concern was, again, on that site coverage, and Parcel A is at 20% calculated in the more, the less restrictive way. In the more restrictive way, I can't imagine it would be over 40%, so I think that's fine. And so I would be willing to make a motion to approve this project as submitted.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Sure.
Just for clarity's sake, the conditions of approval state, lot size is being .503. The description was .47, just for accuracy of what we are voting on. Can we get clarity on that?
Yes, there's, there is a adjustment of the lot line between 461 and this property, a little triangle down in kind of the middle of the bottom of the sheet. And so that was part of us granting them the easement, proposed easement to get to the lot, was we were shifting that to square off the flag, and this was in the agreement signed by my parents and the Blosters in 1989.
Thank you.
So is the tentative map making that adjustment, or there was a previous lot line adjustment?
The tentative map's doing it, that's why it's called the subdivision of those two parcels.
Okay. So we're adding some acreage, which brings it up to the .50.
Correct, and also adds that amount of land to Parcel B.
Right.
One more additional, again, cleanup. We're having a problem with that indemnity condition tonight. In this instance, because it actually is a subdivision, it is appropriate for the indemnification language contained within the conditions of approval to remain the way it is, but you need to add the one that was passed out because that would be the indemnity applicable to the sequet determination this evening. So with that, I would ask that you add the provisions of the passed-out version as applicable to the entitlements other than the tentative map.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Yes, I accept. Sorry, yes, I accept that.
And do you have a second?
I do.
If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willander?
Aye.
Commissioner Bohar?
Aye.
Commissioner Barbosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Aye.
And Chair Felder?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved, seven, zero.
Thank you.
Chair, just a question for staff, procedural. So this, am I correct in understanding that this matter would come back before the commission for the final map approval? No. So what, is that, is that something that's administratively done or ministerially handled? Okay, thank you.
We have now reached 7.4, which is a tentative parcel map application for a subdivision of a 16,630-square-foot parcel into two lots at 700 West Spain Street. And with that, I'll ask Christina to give us the staff report.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, the proposed project is located on Spain Street near the intersection of Fifth Street West, Sessors Parcel 127204011. The project site is a 0.38-acre parcel with frontage along West Spain Street. It's currently developed with an existing residence with attached garage, two driveways, two sheds. There's also a variety of trees on the project site. There's a bunch of fruit trees in the back, some large London plains in the front, and a mature 24-inch Valley oak. The frontage is improved with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. The development standards applicable to the project site include, the project's in the northwest planning area, zoning is low-density residential, the allowed density is two to five dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. Minimum lot dimensions are 65 feet width, 90-foot depth, and the required, oh, I lost my side setbacks off, excuse me, 20-foot front, 20-foot rear, and I'm going to forget the front, but I have it later on. The applicant is requesting to divide the parcel into, into two lots. Parcel One would front West Spain Street and would contain the existing residence, the existing garage, and both driveways. It would total 0.175 acres or 7,618 square feet. Would maintain a 76-foot lot width and 100-foot lot depth. Parcel Two would front the new driveway, so it would be oriented differently than Parcel One. It's currently undeveloped, except for a small shed and a variety of fruit trees. There's also some remaining piping and PVC pipes and things like that. The acreage would be 0.21 acres, about 9,000 square feet. It would have a lot width of 90 feet and a lot depth of 100 feet. That tentative parcel map for your consideration. This project has actually been in the planning process for almost over a year at this point. And in the process of writing my staff report, I identified a couple issues with the, largely with the general plan density. The applicant has worked willingly with the city for about a year and has, had been told from prior planning staff that the, the project site was divisible based on the zoning laws. When I calculated the density, the allowed density based on the area is 1.9 units, they're requesting two. The proposed density would be 5.26 units per acre, where the allowed density has a maximum of five. For all other intents and purposes, the project meets the zoning code standards, it meets a minimum lot size, minimum width and depth, minimum setbacks. The code does also have a provision that, that the density would be between two and five units per acre. So there's a inconsistency in the, with the general plan and also with the code. So we're before you tonight to have a discussion on this issue and see if we can figure out a way to resolve this, whether it's resolvable tonight or at a future point. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So what is your recommendation? You have a recommendation in the staff report, do you not?
No. What's before you is a, is a study session, so there's, yeah, for, for feedback, I think previous practice was rounding, and that the prior administration would have unofficially rounded. There are no provisions in our code to allow rounding, so the commission could consider future development code changes that would allow and specifically outline how staff and, and projects should be rounding the density standard. It's not in our code right now.
Okay.
Okay. So questions? Questions of staff?
Um, are you allowed to make exceptions to density? No. And this is also, I've noticed, um, requesting a sequo exemption?
Correct.
Under a exemption that requires strict conformance with the code.
Correct.
Um, of course, one can't build nine tenths of a unit any more than you can have, um, you know, uh, three-quarters of a child in a household. Uh, so some of these, uh, calculations don't lend themselves to the nature of reality. Um, and, uh, as you say, the past practice of staff had been to round the number. Um, and, uh, that doesn't seem to be available as a solution on this project unless we change the code requirements, which would mean also some discussion about what would constitute an appropriate range of numbers to round. In other words, would you round up to two if anything came above one point seven five, or one point eight, or one point nine? In other words, there's a threshold that you would use to decide when you could round. Um, so, uh, it doesn't seem to me that, um, at least on this particular issue, uh, other, uh, the ac- we can't really take any action other than recommend to the city council that it, that it amend the development code with a formula for, if, if it's the recommendation of the group, to come up with a rounding, uh, methodology that could be applied to these kinds of odd calculations. I mean, is that basically what you see is what needs to be done?
Yeah, I think the code is ambiguous, and any clarity that we can add to it to address situations like this would probably be helpful.
Obviously, there's a, a number of items in the development code that have been discussed that need to be looked at. Um, and it would, I'm not sure what the timing of all this would be. But this is, this adds to the list, I guess. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? With the applicant, well, go ahead.
Quick question. So if I've heard correctly, if, if the density can't be met, then we can't make any condition of approval to, say, uh, restrict a certain size of house? In other words, if the spirit of density is just that density, and you come back and you, and you say, "Well, we can accept this, but, uh, the development of that flag lot now has to be limited to a footprint of X."
It's not really a square footage issue. It's just a pure number of units issue. And, um, but for all intents and purposes, the, for the neighborhood, they're actually very large lots. That's my neighborhood. I think my neighbor has a six thousand square foot lot. I have an eleven thousand square foot lot. There's a good deal of variety. I think in the supporting housing and moving forward, I think it's an important issue to look at.
Okay.
So the, um, just to add to this, the only way, uh, that you would be able to get beyond the question of density would be under a density bonus scenario where the additional unit was proposed as an affordable unit? And at that point, you could bump it to two with a density bonus?
Um, question on that. If the back unit, the flag lot, if it were something higher density, such as a duplex, would that be able to get around the density bonus or not?
It actually exacerbates the problem. From a density perspective, what, again, potentially the numbers could work out under a density bonus scenario, but they would, then, one of those units would have to be proposed as affordable.
Is the applicant here who can address whether you want to accept, uh, a project approval that requires you to have one affordable unit?
We will open up the, the hearing and let the applicant approach, yep.
Hi, my name's Jerry Yegra. First time appearing before you folks. So, uh, this has been quite a learning experience. As Christina had mentioned in her presentation, it's been a long time coming. I actually approached the planning department in early January of two thousand eighteen, prior to acquiring the site, uh, because it was suggested in the marketing materials that the, that the lot was divisible. So I wanted to confirm that. I went down to planning twice before acquiring building, or the site, uh, to ensure that that was correct information. I was told it was, and I was shown how the lot needed to be subdivided in this flag lot configuration. Um, and I was told about the minimum square footage requirements and the proportionate requirements of the dimensions. And I was also told that this was a straightforward subdivision, that, uh, it should be a three-to-four month process. Uh, I was originally calendared in, I believe, for the August commission meeting. That then got pushed back to September, then October, November, December. And here we are today, still not hearing my application, but really, this is just a workshop session. The issue of density, the first I heard about it was a call from Christina two weeks ago, uh, when she discovered it. Up until that point, no member of the planning commission, um, was aware that it might apply to this site. And there have been dozens of conversations, as well as emails and, uh, drawing revisions. I'm now into this for a total, it's, uh, fourteen and a half months. I'm at ten thousand dollars of cash, which doesn't include a cent for the, literally, probably a hundred hours I have invested in this at this point in time. Uh, there's been new fees that have been added to, uh, what I was told it would cost, uh, to develop the lot. You know, that's a little of the history. Uh, but relative to the lot itself, let's just look at that block and consider what's going on along West Spain Street in this northwest Sonoma area. When you look, um, it's receiving most of the higher density, uh, multifamily development, right? Particularly on West Spain Street, west of Fifth, which is where this property is, by the way. It's about six or seven doors in from, uh, Fifth. It's on the north side of the street. Uh, my neighbors, you may recognize, one is a recently constructed blue home, which is kind of a prefabricated home. They have two units on the property. That lot, uh, was developed over the last few years. It, um, it is actually, uh, my lot is twenty-five percent larger than that lot. And the only other, uh, residences that have single-family and sometimes two units on them are, uh, on the north side of the street and east of where I am. And as I mentioned, there's only like six or seven other properties, many of whom have additional units in the back of those homes. Everything to the west and everything across the street to the south is either commercial development or, or multifamily. Right? There are, as you circle the entire block, you go up Unipero Sarah, and then around, uh, Lawson, I believe it's called? And then down around the back, it's kind of a circular, uh, street, and then finally hitting Fifth Street and coming down. If you approve the subdivision, this, even the smallest of the two parcels will be larger than the vast majority of all the, all the sites on the entire block. When you look at the square footage, ignoring the square footage allocation of the building size versus the land area and the floor area ratios and the coverage ratio. This will have a lower coverage, one of the lowest coverage ratios. Um, and it will also have one of the greatest allocations of lot square footage to, uh, residents, to the unit itself. So there'll be two units, you know, if you just divided by two for simple math, it would, would be, you know, like eighty-three hundred square feet. But it's not exactly devised in that way to meet the dimensional requirements. But, um, in a common sense level, it, it makes total sense with what's going on. The Olivier apartments were recently approved. That's a high-density project going in directly across the street on the vacant lot. And that's directly across. Next door to it is another high-density condo units. Surrounding me on the north and on the west is the, um, uh, Sweetwater Spectrum project. Uh, to the west directly, they have an agricultural patch, but they're not really sure that what they're gonna do with. I spoke with Corey just the other day about it, and he, uh, he, uh, told me that, uh, they had hoped to build more, uh, housing for, uh, their autistic residents, but there's some issues with the state licensing board regarding that, so they're not sure what they're gonna do. But everything else on the, on the south side of the street, uh, beyond the Sweetwater project, is either mixed-use or, uh, medium-density, I believe, zoning. So we're not gonna change the neighborhood. Uh, we're not going to burden the streets. We're not gonna burden the infrastructure. Uh, we are gonna be one of the least dense, or one of the, sorry, one of the most generous, uh, square footage allocations of land to unit, uh, on the entire block. The only thing that comes close is Unipero Sarah, uh, where those, those, most of those homes have about seventy-five hundred square feet of land area in comparison to the, to a single-family dwelling. So I'm kind of at a, a difficult place here. This, this issue only came up two weeks ago. Nobody was aware of it. I've been given bad advice. I wouldn't have bought the property, um, without the information I received from planning at the time, last January. And, um, you know, here I sit, uh, with a rounding error in terms of the technical shortfall. And, and by the way, on that shortfall, it's not even clear that we are short, because the, the square footage that's being represented in the, uh, in this findings report is actually the net square footage of the lot and not the gross. And if you look at the general plan, page thirteen, under density, you will see a reference to the exclusion of, um, streets in that. Technically, I own a portion of the street. That square footage isn't actually included in the sixteen thousand six hundred thirty-two square feet you see in your report. But I own a portion of the street. If forever, uh, if ever the easement were, you know, the city were to vacate, which they're not, but if they were, that, that is my property. Um, and according to my consulting engineers, Hogan, um, who have been around for a long time, they have told me that, uh, other communities and this community have considered that in the past and weigh that in their formulas. And that, in actuality, my lot is, what did they say, uh, two hundred or two thousand or twenty-five hundred square feet larger? Yeah, it was something to that effect, that, you know, in total, my lot is actually more like nineteen thousand and some change. So David had suggested that we make this a workshop, because it meets all the requirements. In fact, it's very desirable, this, uh, based on all the objectives of the gen- general plan. It's an infill site. Uh, it doesn't block views. It doesn't tax the infrastructure. Uh, it facilitates, uh, walking and, um, non-driving because of its proximity to the markets, the Sonoma market, Safeway, the restaurants and the stores, even the square is only a ten-minute walk. Um, so it's a great site to, um, take advantage and, um, add to the housing stock within the community without, uh, burdening it with, uh, infrastructure problems. And, you know, it'll be wel- well landscaped. There's the Arbus report, which we did. I've agreed to maintain the trees that are considered significant. So there's an oak tree, and there's four London plan, something or others. Um, and, um, you know, I'm, I, I'm gonna add to the trees, actually. I wanna facilitate some, uh, uh, some trees along the perimeter line of the property, to create both privacy for my, for my neighbors and for, for this lot. Um, so I'm here to seek out your counsel. How can we make this happen?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Christina, I don't know how this plays into it, but further down West Spain Street, coming closer to the plaza, right next to the state parkland, just on the east side of that, there are, there's a house behind a house, but it, the house behind it was actually designated a condo because of the zero lot line or the lot size. Is there, it would still be a unit? Wow.
And my guess is, they didn't meet this ratio. I think I know which lot you're talking about.
Question on that. So if, if our hands are tied, but what was suggested, that there has been some history to other communities making some sort of interpretation as far as the gross versus the net, and if indeed there has been some misinformation that has transpired historically, why can't we be flexible? And not get ourselves hung up or get into another lawsuit?
So, um, a couple of answers to that. That's up to the commission relative to how you, uh, want to interpret. I will say that I don't agree that existing streets, um, not being dedicated as part of the subdivision being proposed, um, are in fact counted in gross density. I am aware of no city that calculates existing streets as part of gross density. Um, the, uh, the, your codes, your code, your general plan's definition, or I won't say definition, 'cause it's not actually a definition. It does say, however, that density refers to the number of dwelling units normally allowed per gross acre open per n prior to the dedications for streets or other improvements closed per n, implying, in the code at least, or in the general plan, that it's talking about dedications as part of the subdivision being proposed, as opposed to dedications that were made in the eighteen hundreds on the original plat map of the city, which is what we're talking about here. Or what I understand we're talking about here. Whether or not the property owner in question's legal description describes the property to the center line of the street, I do not know. The legal description has not been, um,
Yeah, the legal description is in your-
I'm told by staff it doesn't.
No, it doesn't, and it, it assigns it to an APN specifically, so that might be something we can talk about if it's done in other jurisdictions, but I don't think it is.
Uh, I got this from Eric Langquist. He is the one who, uh, raised it. He says, um, I'm assuming he can give you other examples of other communities to your point about not being familiar.
I have now. Um, and the other question is, without substantial research, uh, into the question of who owns the underlying fee in the right-of-way, where the right-of-way was dedicated in, I'm not even gonna guess what year, I couldn't tell you that the assumption, um, being proposed here this evening by, um, the subdivi- I'm not saying it's wrong or right, I'm just saying I don't know, um, by the divider, that he owns the underlying fee to the roadway, and if the roadway were vacated, it would be part of his property. That's not necessarily true. It's not necessarily untrue either. I'm just saying, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, it depends on how the city took title to the right-of-way in the first instance and how it was dedicated.
I have a question of staff. We're in a dilemma here where it doesn't sound like we can take any specific action without getting some change in the code. Is that the correct assumption?
Correct. The, um, the allegations brought up by Eric and, um, the information provided via email, I would require a lot more information. Right now, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old title report. I would need a new title report, chain of title, probably to check back. I, we'd need to go look at the original recorded maps.
So, uh, let me pose one more to the applicant then. Is there any willingness on your part to put an affordable unit on that back property to get a den- density bonus? Is that even an option?
Not at the price I pay.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I, I, I have to ask that question.
No, no, that's a reasonable question, and I, I just don't have the flexibility- No, that's a reasonable question, and I just don't have the flexibility. I couldn't have paid what I paid with that information, right? The other thing that makes this warranted as well, by the -- you know, there's about 20 reasons that it makes sense, and there's potentially one technical rounding error for which it may not. And -- but if you look at that neighborhood as a whole, in order for someone to build on that lot and the back lot, which it should be built upon, it's sitting there unutilized. And -- but the price point at which they would be in at is going to mandate that it be a very wealthy individual, right? If you maintain one lot, keeping the front building as an ADU and then building in the back, it's going to be a very expensive project to execute, and it does not really sync up well with the neighborhood. If this site was over on the east side, same configuration and same size, it'd be worth 50 to 100% more, just in market value. It's not. It's west of Fifth Street on Spain Street.
What I'm concerned with, though, is that we're pretty much powerless to do anything at this point by this commission, except to continue this item while staff goes off and researches some of these other issues to see if there's a way around it or a way to change the code to make it work.
What about past precedent?
Go ahead.
I'm sympathetic to your situation. In your -- when you said you had received essentially information from the city indicating that you could proceed with this project the way you had when you first made it, did you get any of those -- is any of that in writing?
Just in my notes, yes.
Just in your notes, but you don't have anything in writing from the city affirming your ability to subdivide this lot?
I -- no, I never got an affirmation in the form of a written letter or anything that said specifically. And having gone through this process, I will attempt to do that in the future.
No, I --
Because there has been, it has been a moving target throughout the entire process.
Oh, no, I can --
Every time I overcome one hurdle, a new one appears.
I am a strong -- I'm a strong supporter of getting things in writing.
Yeah.
And confirmations of understandings in writing whenever possible. It's just --
I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but it was a senior planner who I was talking with at the time. He's no longer.
No, I understand. And to the extent to which the city has discovered that its methodology has been based on an improper reading of its own code, you know, bears some responsibility in this situation, clearly as far as I'm concerned. It's not, once again, our purview to negotiate something with you in order to quote-unquote "compensate" you for the time and effort and potential loss that you've covered because the city has discovered its -- has changed its calculations. It's just not something that this commission is capable of doing. I think that -- I would think that, given the reality of this situation, that as this matter goes forward, it would not be inappropriate for you to explore with the city what it might be prepared to offer in some form to ameliorate the added costs that you're suffering, if in fact it's willing to concede that because it's changed its own calculations, it bears at least some responsibility for the situation. But that's something you would have to open up with the city. I mean, it would be terrible to see this end up in a legal situation, which costs you and everybody else a lot of money. I think that, you know, this strikes me as a relatively straightforward subdivision, except for this glitch. And I'm not hearing that, as the chair has said, that it's really within our power to preemptorily decide what the rules of the city are going to be. It's -- we don't do that on this commission. It's something that the council needs to do.
So if I could summarize, just for the sake of bringing us all back, there's an issue with the way the density is calculated under the general plan. There's also a different language under the zoning code. So under the zoning code, it says two to five units per parcel. So under the zoning code, there's no language about right-of-way or areas dedicated for streets, things like that. So to me, the paths forward are, one, to consider a lot line adjustment with any of the adjoining neighbors. I'm not sure if that's a possibility to get the additional land or to hold off on the application until the commission can consider some rounding provisions. You can --
We can look at the --
We can look at the additional information.
I need a couple two-month process going forward here, folks. You know, I'm going on 15 months into this thing.
Commissioner Barros, did you have something to add?
It was really a question for the city attorney. Is this something you could take to the council in terms of the city being a stop from enforcing this requirement, given the advice that was given the applicant?
Certainly, we can talk to the council about that issue. Generally speaking, a stop won't lie based on a mistake by staff. But having said that, I think we can look at the question. You know, we haven't dug into this one at all in terms of the facts or anything else. As I think the applicant indicated, this issue just came up, so we haven't had any chance to do any research into the background of this issue.
I would just like to see this staff and all of us find a way to make this work for this applicant who's clearly in a spot that he shouldn't be in.
So I think bringing the item before the commission this evening was an effort, I think, on staff's part to find out, you know, how did the commission feel about the subdivision overall, other than this issue, to get some direction about, is this subdivision otherwise acceptable, assuming we didn't have this density problem, so then we can look at what options there are, if any, or what code changes or amendments could be made that could allow it to occur.
I think that I'll ask for comments from individual commissioners, but I think we would have consensus that we wouldn't have a problem with the subdivision if it weren't for the glitch. But I would ask for individuals' comment.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. How quickly, in a best-case scenario, can a code change, development code change be made, specifically just this one, like a rounding provision?
I'm not sure I can answer that off the cuff. I'm assuming you're asking me and not staff, but --
Yes, or anyone, really. I mean --
I think we would have to look at the question of what would the overall implications of a rounding requirement citywide be. And we'd probably have to take some pretty careful look at where, I think Commissioner Barnett, Commissioner Larry Barnett, sorry, mentioned, where do you round? Like, at what point do you set that?
So it could be a complicated process.
I don't think it would be super simple. I guess I would phrase it that way. I don't think it's a one-month or a two-month thing. Having said that, I don't think we've -- we certainly haven't -- I don't know whether staff has among themselves discussed that internally. I have not been participating. I have not had a discussion with staff about that issue.
But to bring this onto point, I guess I would ask this commission if speak up either for or against, but if there were a way to solve this dilemma for this applicant and allow it to go ahead with the subdivision, and we could find a way that could make the change with whoever or however, would we be in favor of that?
I would support that.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Sure.
I would, but I'd love for you to keep that oak. I'd love -- I support the project. Try to keep that oak, that 24-inch.
God, definitely. I've already committed to it.
Christina hammered me on that.
I made, and that's why it took a couple extra months.
I told her I wanted it. Okay, we've got to put it in writing. We've got to put it on the map. It's on the map.
What you're hearing from this commission, then, is we would fully support this subdivision if it were possible to find a way to do it. So we're asking staff to go off and find a way.
Yeah, one of the options I think we'd be looking at is a code, a concurrent code amendment with the processing of the map. So we'll try to look at that, because in that, there may even have to be a negative deck, which is a little bit easier, a little bit tougher than an initial study, excuse me, a categorical exemption. But we'll take a look at those options in return.
And unfortunately, I think that's the best we can do, is we can emphatically insist that staff find a way.
Yeah. Well, no, I appreciate your support and desire to find a solution, so I want to thank you all for that. And, you know, I will continue to work with Christina and the rest of the team on many of whom who I've exchanged comments, Wendy, David.
We'll just make sure we don't quit while you're going through the process, and we'll put it in writing. How's that?
As a matter of -- to clean this up, should we have a motion to continue this to a future calendar?
It was a workshop, so I think what we could do is we'll have to do a 20-day notice and all that stuff if we can --
But I don't want the applicant to have to pay another fee to bring it back to us.
Yeah, we'll have the planning commission provide the funding for that, then.
Can we put a timeframe on this, like, so that we don't leave Bistrigo waiting? Is there some defined period of time that we can say that we will have some ideas back to us?
We certainly have understood the intent of the commission, but we do have the law to deal with when it talks about noticing procedures and things of that nature. So we'll get working on it in return as fast as we can expeditiously.
Yeah. Two things. One, are you planning, and I don't even know if this question is relevant, but are you planning to, once you divide the parcel, just sell the parcel? Or are you going to develop it yourself?
Well, initially, my intent was to build. Right now, I'm running a little cold on it, honestly. I will likely --
I guess my point was you could --
Sell it. Yes.
Okay.
I'll do some upgrades before I sell it, which was always my intent. I've delayed those because I thought I'd be getting tentative math approval a lot earlier, so it's really postponed much of my plan here. But it opens up flexibility. It may be one buyer who decides they want, you know, to have both properties, both homes on it, in which case they can go down the ADU unit as long as they keep it under 850 square feet, which the existing house is. Or it could be two buyers to make it affordable for two families, potentially. I really don't know. I do know that it's going to be worth more money, and that was in part the justification I had for paying what I did pay when I acquired this. I couldn't have afforded to the number I paid were it not for my belief from the feedback.
I was just wondering if there was a way you could continue forward with planning and development while we concurrently. I think you mentioned something, you know.
You can't because it affects the square footage requirement, and it affects the setbacks.
Right.
Right? And so for that reason, I wouldn't want to pay. I've already, as I mentioned, I have over $10,000.
No, I understand. No, I understand.
I don't want to go hire an architect to spend tens more and then have to redo it down the road.
We have two local architects in the audience that might do us pro bono.
Raise your hand.
There's three, Eddie. There's three.
Oh, three? Sorry. No, I --
I also just want to briefly say, I mean, I can't imagine how frustrated you are, and so I want to --
Christina's gotten a lot of the --
I think the entire planning commission is very, very sorry for what you've had to go through. At the same time, I do want to thank Christina for calculating this the right way. I think, I know it's very frustrating in this particular instance, but for way too long, I think things have just not been done the right way, and we've found ourselves in these situations. And so I'm happy that things are being done the right way. I know it's very frustrating right now, but --
Yeah. If I could just make a suggestion, it's been, the modifications and the new information has been coming at me piece-neel. And I know people are aware that there have been problems with planning, and that's why you're going through a reassessment. That's why they're getting instructions to follow the book specifically that perhaps wasn't in the past. But just in terms of processing these applications, there is a better way. And it's something that I would invite you to investigate. I think I could have written, I can write, a two-page memo that will describe the process so that future applicants will know what to deal with it. And it's also something that could act as a template for the planners themselves. Instead of them having to touch the same document 10, 15 times, if they had a more orderly process, it would save them time, right? It's going to save time for the applicant and consulting fees. And it's really not that difficult. The issue of density never came up until two weeks ago. Never came up. And it should have been right there at the top of the list. Instead, you know, everybody was focused on square footage, the minimum square footage allocation and the dimensions. Nobody thought to compare it to the density limit. So anyway, I know you've got other people.
And technically, we still are, have the public hearing open, and would have to ask if anyone else from the public would like to come up and speak on this item.
Thank you all.
Vic Conforti, 755 Broadway. I was watching this on television because I was interested in coming down one of the last items. I couldn't help but feel the pain. I guess I'm trying to understand the -- a legal description includes some additional land that's in the city right-of-way? Oh, it doesn't? Oh, okay.
It's by APN, Vic, the description in the title report.
Oh, okay. Well, another thought occurred to me, which may muddy the waters, but there with a density bonus, perhaps as ADU added to somewhere, could be an affordable rental.
That was suggested.
Oh, it was? Okay, good. Well, good. Well, you guys are way ahead of me.
You missed it when you were walking down here, Vic.
Anyone else?
So, well, there's 873 for Street West. I think that our general plan, development code, support infill density, as you all know. And I would, and I understand the density-by-the-number business. And I would recommend to the commission and the council that the development code and general plan update process begin as soon as possible. Get ahead of the state legislation that's coming down the road. Get ahead of everything so you understand it going forward, and include in that a rounding process that's tight, 1.9 plus, not 1.75, so that you kind of almost get there, you get two, 1.9 plus. So properties like this, that get a couple of extra square feet, and they would be two, we get the benefit of an additional housing unit. I think, you know, you all understand it makes sense to subdivide this parcel and add a housing unit to Sonoma on that piece of land. You should be able to do it, and it shouldn't be held back by 700 or 1,000 square feet of land.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Seeing none, I think we'll bring it back to the commission, and I think staff has direction. Okay. We will then move on.
Take a break.
We'll need a break. Take about three or four minutes. Take about three or four minutes. Call a meeting back to order. We will now move on to item 7.5, which is a design review study session for DeNova Homes for the development of the 16-family, single-family residents in two duplex units and 12 accessory dwelling units at 851 to 853 Fourth Street West. With that, the project planner, Christina.
Thank you. In the interest of time, given that we've spent a little bit of time on this project already, I'm going to go pretty quick. So essentially, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to give the commission and applicant an opportunity to have dialogue prior to them submitting for the design review process. So just to, for the new commissioners, the tentative parcel map was approved on January 31st. And now the applicant is before you to get feedback on their proposed design. So the project is in the central west planning area. The zoning is residential Sonoma. The minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. And, my gosh, I got my setbacks again wrong, sorry, guys. Yeah, 25 average. So the project that's before us tonight is sort of a pre-design review for 16 single-family residences, two duplexes, and 12 accessory dwelling units. The architecture is Sonoma California Craftsman-inspired, and this is sort of the overall schematic site plan. That's the old one. That's not the actual, that's not the map. I didn't think we needed to look at the map again. And I'll pretty much just kick it over to Trent.
Let me interject for just a second.
Okay, you can interject.
Since this is a study session, I want to emphasize to the commission, especially with this late hour and we still have another item, that we should be focusing on the site planning, scale and mass of the units and how they're compatible with the neighboring areas and not get into the minutia of design detail. So we're looking to give direction to DeNova Homes to give them an idea of what we'd like to see them build on these parcels that we have managed to get a tentative map for and to keep it general enough so that you have direction, but we don't get buried in detail. So with that, first of all, are there any questions of staff before we let the applicant come up?
Being new to this project up here, I'm just, and I want to get a little clarity on what's the scope of this study session. Are we, is, are we going to be talking about or potentially talking about sizes of units, like ADUs, as well as classification of medium income or low income for the affordable units, or is that on the table tonight?
The affordable units are governed by the zoning code and the general plan, and so there's, the provision is for two to be moderate and two to be low income. So that's.
Okay, so that's done.
Yeah.
But in terms of the sizes of the ADUs, that's something we could talk about?
Sizes of the units, colors, materials, massing, the access is locked down, the property lines are, have been snapped down. So don't say you want to move the driveway five feet to the left, please.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add.
Yes.
In the interest of the new commissioners that have joined us, in the past, the design review, HPC, component has not been at the commission. And so in this particular case, we have read the code and there is a provision to join it. And there was such an interest of the planning commission to address design review issues along with the map, the applicant didn't apply for design review. So that's why they've been bifurcated. But there was a condition of the map, that the design review returned to the commission as opposed to taking a subsequent journey after the commission to the design review HPC. So in the future, moving forward, we'll be interpreting that particular provision of the code to join those components together so that we don't have an incident like we have this tonight. This is one of a couple of applications where it's that new interpretation, if you will.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Trent, you're on.
Thank you, Chair Felder. Good evening, everybody. My name is Trent Sanson from DeNova Homes. Very good to see very familiar, very many familiar faces and welcome to the new members of the planning commission. Very pleased to be before I hear you all this evening, and thank you very much for your time. I know it's been a long meeting. You guys are quite the troopers with putting up with all the persistent applications that are continuing your way, but it's a good sign of economic development and prosperity coming to Sonoma. So sincerely, thank you for your time. As Christina mentioned, we are seeking some feedback for our design review application. I think I'm, I think I'm plugged in, but let me try. Getting there. There we go. So as Christina mentioned, we're seeking some feedback tonight for our design review application that has yet to be submitted for Mockingbird Lane. Back on January 31st, we approved our vesting tentative map for condominium purposes after much thoughtful review with the planning commission sitting where you all are this evening at that point in time. There was a lot of discussion for the massing and the types of the structures. So we've made some conceptual changes to the very preliminary architecture that was provided early on. So we're seeking some more formal feedback this evening for us to get back with our architects, our landscape architects, our design team to try to refine things before we submit that formally, formal application to city staff for the formal design review process to come before you all. Outline of the presentation I have for you this evening, we'll just take a quick peek at the approved vesting tentative map for condominium purposes, go through outline of the preliminary architecture program that was proposed during the vesting tentative map review process, some of the summary updates that we've considered that we wanted to present to you all this evening for that architecture, go through the existing surroundings around Fourth, Hayes, and West MacArthur to go to show why we were going with our proposed architectural theme, a brief outline for the landscape concept, feedback for any light fixtures, a little discussion about ADU types that are allowed, since we are conditioned to provide 12 with this project. And any questions, feedback, comments, we'll, myself and my partner Pete Giles are here to take any and all notes this evening so that we can make sure we can go back with our design team and try to do the best we can to address all the feedback we receive. Here is the vesting tentative map with some of the preliminary footprints at that point in time provided on January 31st to illustrate how we could meet all of the site coverage, FAR, setback requirements, et cetera. 18 residential lots with two of the lots proposed for condominium purposes, which was approved on that vesting tentative map. Our preliminary architecture program, our Plan 1 is the duplex, which consists of two 1,300 square foot units. Our Plan 2 at that point in time was our original attempt to embody that one and a half story style unit we presented at the study session we had in January 2018. We've since received the feedback from the planning commission on January 31st this year and tried to come up with some new alternatives, present to you all this evening. We heard some feedback from a couple commissioners that they would like to see 25% of the lots embody that one and a half story to try to better resemble the surrounding community. Our original Plan 3, which was just under 2,000 square feet, this was a plan that had curb cuts on all, on several of the driveways or several of the lots where they had a front-loaded tandem garage. And there was a modification to that plan with a 3X that was just under 2,200 square feet. A Plan 4, which is just over 2,000 square feet. And then our Plan 5, which is just over 2,700 square feet and isn't designed with a full wrap porch, that is now currently on lots 1 and 18, to try to better engage with West MacArthur, Hayes, and Fourth from all those corners right there. The new program that we are exploring and wanted to get some feedback on this evening, the main changes you'll see are to the Plan 2. We've made some updates with our architect team to come up with a design, an elevation design that better embodies that one and a half story type of a plan where it is a two-story home, but the second level is designed within the roof lines of the home, so it embodies a single story from the street. So it gives off the elevation and the perspective of a single-story home while giving the livability and flexibility and functionality of a two-story home. So we've come up with a couple of options that we wanted to get some feedback on. Our Plan 3, we got rid of the whole front-loaded tandem garage thing, got rid of all the curb cuts on Hayes and Fourth. Now every plan we are proposing is an alley-loaded plan so that everything would come in off of the A and B streets into the private alley on the interior. The two alternatives, the first one is another one and a half story plan to try to continue to add to that mix of the single-story visuals. And the alternative 2 is a little bit of a larger plan that resembles a true two-story home. So I'm curious for the feedback from the commissioners on that this evening. And then our Plans 4 and 5 would remain the same, but the Plan 5 is now only on two lots instead of four lots based on the changes we made to that tentative map back on January 31st. So a much more even distribution of low to high on the square footages for that diversity in housing, the central west planning area is looking for. To the left, this was the original conceptual architecture for the Plan 2 that we were proposing. We had a dormer-style elevation enhancement here in the middle where the upstairs area would be able to have some light from the streets, but feedback from the neighbors and several of the planning commissioners over that, it just looked too much like a two-story home. So we came up with the two alternatives on your right to make it look more like a single story. And I could pull up some of the sketch floor plans if you would like as well. I didn't incorporate them in the slide for the sake of time to go through. But I would be curious what type of a style of this one and a half story home you would prefer the most. The old Plan 3 and the 3X, top and bottom on the left-hand side that we've subbed out for the new Plan 3, which the top one is the elevation we've come up with in the plan that would look like another one and a half story home, so that there would be more of that diversity with two to single-story appearing elevations. And then if the planning commission thought that the two-story home on the bottom was attractive as well, we'd be curious on that feedback between both of those. We were going for a Sonoma California Craftsman architecture theme to mimic the surrounding homes in the community and the area. And just to help illustrate that, Peter and I came up with this photo montage going around the entire property just to go through all aspects of the site, just to show a little bit of what's going on. There's a very eclectic theme of architecture in this area, but the themes that we saw the most was predominantly craftsmen in style, which is what we tried to mimic with our elevation concepts proposed for Mockingbird Lane. So you'll see a mix of one, two-story homes. Some homes appear to be one and a half as well. I haven't gone into all the homes, but this is definitely a one-story. There's the two-story. Here's some more craftsmen on the other side of West MacArthur. I'm not sure what this theme is, but. And this other craftsman theme here. More craftsmen throughout, more craftsmen. So this, that's why we went with the theme for our proposed development. Just running through, I can pull this back up later if you all would like. And then just a overall panoramic shot of the property itself. Those do make me dizzy, too. We didn't prepare a full-on landscape plan this evening because we were hoping to get some feedback and direction. I believe one of the commissioners is a landscape architect himself, but with new state drought tolerant requirements with Welo, I promise and guarantee that everything will be Welo compliant. We've already done our soil analysis to make sure the plants that are selected for this will be drought tolerant and will be able to succeed on the soils on the property. We have bio-retention treatment basins throughout all frontages of the property and the front yards of these homes. So we'll make sure we come up with a very attractive planting plan and tree planting plan that will not interfere with the functionality of those C3 water quality treatment basins, but still enhance and add to the quality of the streetscape on all three sides of this project. And then also, I just wanted to further add that the homeowner, the Future Homeowners Association that will be maintaining the private roadway down the middle of the project will also be maintaining the front yards of all the outside fenced areas of the property to make sure in perpetuity, the streetscape on the in and out of the project is maintained forever, so that there is not a negligent homeowner that chooses to not maintain their yard. The H O L makes sure everything is maintained properly forever. Here's some several light fixtures. I just was curious for some feedback, indifferent or not. My personal favorite is the top right one, but I'd be very curious what the commission, the commission's feedback would be on light fixtures. We'll have a full photometric and lighting plan for our formal application with full landscape architecture, but any feedback this evening will be incorporated into those plans. The ADUs, since we started this project well over a year ago, going back to the previous applicant, feedback from previous city staff was that two-story ADUs were allowed. After digging into the code, we came to realize that ADUs had to be single-story and no more than 15 feet in height. So we came up with a new concept of single-story ADUs that we've been able to fit and have come up with an area for 12 that will be able to fit throughout the 18 lots. But just wanted to have some discussion this evening. I'm not sure if there's been any further discussion at higher up in the city in regards to what would be permitted for ADUs, whether they're two-story or not. The original concept that we had was that we could get about a 750 square foot ADU on the top floor with a garage, detached garage for the primary unit on the bottom and carport for the resident, potential resident in the accessory dwelling unit. But since with current interpretation of the code, bringing it down, we had to do some just dedicated parking for the ADU, which now is between 300 and 400 square feet with an additional detached garage for the 12 ADUs that will be on there. The rest of the homes without ADUs will just have their own separate dedicated detached garages. So with that, sincerely, thank you for your time. I wish I brought coffee for everyone this evening. I wasn't sure it was going to be going so long again, but I welcome any and all questions, comments, and feedback, and thank you very much.
Okay. Don't go away. Commissioner Barnett.
Commissioner Barnett?
Thank you. And this is just my first opportunity to weigh in on this project, so I'll apologize in advance for maybe going in some directions that are new for you. And I'm not going to get into the detail side of things particularly. I want to talk about things more conceptually. As I look around Sonoma, and I appreciated your streetscape photos, although the area surrounding the hospital, you know, has historically been an area of lower-priced, working-class homes that were considered, you know, in a more difficult part of town because they were going to have to put up with sirens and ambulances and so forth. They, they're not particularly, they weren't expensive when they were built, and I don't know what they sell for today. But if you look at Sonoma as a whole, if you, if you go down Patton Street, or Chase Street, or France Street on the east side, the predominant pattern for housing in Sonoma is that each house stands on its own. It's not got a tract house style, and in all frankness, and I don't mean this as a, as an unfair criticism, but the approach of having essentially one style of home for all of the houses is to me a tract-style approach. You end up with four or five variations of a theme, and then you replicate those three times each. And I think it was you, I did attend the previous meetings, I think it was you who said that you've built thousands of homes. Was that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I would assume that among those thousands of homes are probably many dozens of styles and designs.
May I, is that a...
Yeah.
So, yes, no, you are correct. And standard subdivisions are traditional project. We get very excited and we have the chance to get creative with special infill projects such as this when we are selected by the hospital. Other subdivisions that we've done, more traditional tract housing, where it's 100 lots here, there. We'll typically do three plans, three elevations each, but you have the same three plan with a different color scheme and an elevation spread throughout.
Yeah.
Our thought process here initially, and I definitely appreciate the comments and the feedback, Mr. Barnett, was to go with more of a unified theme where it fit in with the surrounding area, but come up with more plans instead of just three plans with varying elevations. But I can definitely explore with my team coming up with a couple different styles for each of the plans here to further diversify it with the color schemes and whatnot.
Well, you know, I guess, and I may be naive, I'm not a, not in the business here and never have been, but if in fact you have built thousands of homes and probably in your files have many dozen different designs and styles, that you've essentially got a stockpile of building plans of various types and styles. They could be, some could be stucco, some could be shingle, some can be other materials, siding. And that, to me, the pattern I see in Sonoma is a mix of varying styles. And I think that while it's, what, to me, what happens is when you have once, basically one style of what you're calling a craftsman style, when you have one style, it, to me, it just looks, it looks tracty, even if it's not the traditional sort of tract home. And given your creativity and experience as a home builder, I'm just wondering if you can explore the option of really mixing it up.
I definitely can. And I assure you, these weren't plans pulled off the shelf. I, we custom-designed these for this product. I just want to promise that 100%, I'm not lying when I say that.
I have, I have no doubts of that. And I appreciate your, you know, your willingness to play with this. I want to make just a comment about the ADUs. I know at the previous meetings, a number of commissioners felt quite positively inclined towards ADUs. I'm reserving my judgment on ADUs. And the reason I reserve my judgment on ADUs in general is because I haven't seen any statistics come forward from the city of Sonoma as to what the current use of the existing and built ADUs in the city of Sonoma are. I don't know how many of them are rental units. I don't know how many of them are fifth bedrooms for the existing houses. I don't know how many have been turned into exercise rooms or office locations for the homeowners. The fact is, is that if we're pinning our hopes on these ADUs of that they're going to be rented and become available housing stock, I'd like to have some hard evidence that that's actually going to happen in a community where houses sell for a million two to a million five or more, because I don't have any evidence of it.
I am, if I could just remind you that the approval of the ADUs was actually part of the map, so that was already, so now we're talking about the design and the details associated with this.
I understand, and, and so it may be too late for my comments. I just, you know, I would love, if, if in fact this is going to be a project that has ADUs, which looks like it will be, I would love to know how the ADUs that are being built are being used. Because, I'll be honest with you, my suspicion is they're not being used as rental units. I don't think people who buy 1.2 or 1.4 million dollar houses are interested in being landlords for tenants. And I live across the street from Armstrong Estates. There's been a number of ADUs or above garage units built in Armstrong Estates. I think it would be interesting to find out how many of those are actually being rented. I'll bet you it's none to a few. And so I, I'm not really sure about the whole ADU concept. I'll leave it at that for now.
May I, can I address the comment?
Sure.
Because I completely understand your concern, and I do not disagree that it would be very interesting to see the statistics, but just to go and give it a little bit more color for, I believe the intent with ADUs and then being allowed in Sonoma's development code is, you're correct, they might not all be rented, but where they allow flexibility for families is, for example, my parents, when I grew up, had an ADU. My grandmother needed some assistance living in her age when I was growing up, so she lived in that ADU before we moved her into Rossmore Care over in Walnut Creek. When I graduated from college, my wife, my now-wife, then fiance, we moved into that ADU ourselves to get started with our lives. So ADUs are intended to allow flexibility. It's not necessarily just intended to be rental for the general market. It's allowed, it's intended for families to be able to keep their families in Sonoma. So I definitely hear where you're coming from, but there's, there's a lot more reasons behind them.
Other questions for the applicants, Mr. Barnett?
Well, I just, I share that the, the comments about wanting more variety in terms of the look of the houses. And I'm just throwing into that, different roofing materials, so they don't all have to be comp shingle. They could be other things. They don't all have to all have the same roof pitch. They could be mixed up there, and so, you know, exterior treatment roofs, pitch, et I looked at these ADUs, and I'm, I'm a little confused about two things. One, what I looked at showed second-story ADUs in our packet, but they weren't 700 feet, as you mentioned. They were all at 400 feet.
The new ones are 400. The old ones that we provided is supplemental just for discussion this evening, and it might be more of a question for staff, is if there is the potential to have second-stories allowed because the last interpretation of the code, and I'm just, I just wasn't sure if there's been any discussion for modifications to the code for that.
Well, this comment then should go to staff, but I don't understand, Armstrong Estates has tons of ADUs, they're all above garages. If you go over on Fourth Street East, every single one of those little craftsman houses, they have a, just like this project, they have a driveway in the back for their garages. Every single garage, and there's one under construction right now, has a second-story ADU. So I don't get why we can't have those. So my pitch would be, let's make them second-story and a heck of a lot bigger than 400 feet. That is not a useful size of a living unit.
It's, it is definitely very, very conservative.
I mean, and they should be as big as you can get them and still be within the, the size limits of an ADU, but if there's any hope that they're going to be utilized for rentals or for use by other members of the family, family units, extended families and the like, let's make them livable family units. The other thing I thought about, and again, this may be for staff, but how do we incentivize rental of ADUs? Is there some way that the city could sweeten the deal for people renting to make them want to rent their ADUs? Jeez, we've got this ADU, but the city's got this program where they're going to do this for us if we rent this. I'd like to see that myself, just because we have a serious housing shortage of, for people who actually work here. We have an economy that many of the people who are the foundation of can't afford to live in Sonoma Valley, period. And so we need to address that, and to me, these ADUs would be a missed opportunity if we, if we didn't at least try.
What's going next?
So I'm confused. Why are we, why are we making our comments?
We're going to do that unless you have questions of the applicant.
Not yet.
It's okay. I think we're going to open this up to the rest of the public, Trent. We'll, we'll drag you back up if we need to.
I'll be right here, no worries.
Anybody else from the public here to comment on this?
One more time. 873 First Street West, Bill Willers. I support Commissioner Barbos's idea about the ADUs over the garages. I think our zoning code actually allow it by use permit. So it's a process. You have to get an exception to allow you to have a second, an ADU as a second-floor unit. I also think that a mix of ADU sizes would be helpful, some larger, some smaller, because the smaller ones will serve the people in our community that are single, have a job in town, and have a modest means and aren't a family. They need housing as well. The variety of the architecture is a good, is a good comment. And I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Hi, George Thompson, 311 Nicolee Lane. So our house is in this neighborhood, and all of the houses in the neighborhood are tract homes. So it's not the east side. This is the west side. So I would support houses that are one-story tall to, to match the neighborhood. We have, on our whole street, we have one house that's two-story, only one house, and it was not built that way. They added on. There's no two-stories in the neighborhood that I know of, very few. And I don't know about the ADUs. We went through this on the Fifth Street Letson Project, Steve Kyle Letson Project out there on Fifth Street, where I used to have my farm. The question of whether people rent these ADUs is really a relevant question, because we demanded that there would be rentable spaces in that. You know where I'm talking about? Yeah, I don't know what it's called. But it's out Fifth, Fifth Street East at Napa Road. So I don't know if the ADUs were ever utilized, or how you enforce that, or, it's a great idea. I, it almost seems like the best way is to have a separate building somewhere on the property, but I don't know how you do that. But I, I support, I don't know if they're, they're talking about putting two stories in. It would really be out of place in this neighborhood. And I think they are all Sears and Roebuck houses in the neighborhood. I don't know where they got them, but they all look the same to me. And we have a secondary concern. I don't know if this is the concern, it's, it's drainage. You know, we're at the end of the street, and all the water comes down that street. I don't know, you know, I'm concerned about this being padded up and us receiving all that water down at the end of the street. We came very close to flooding this year, so I don't know what the plan is for the water drainage, whether it goes to the sewer system, or whether it's going to come down to where our creek is. What is that creek? Nathanson Creek?
Friar.
Friar Creek. So that's, that's our secondary concern. And I guess I have landscaping concerns, too. I'd hate to see a lot of lawns go in, but...
No lawns.
Oh, no lawns, okay.
Thank you.
Maybe cannabis.
Three plants.
My name is Sheldra Jane, and I live at 419 Benton Court Street, and...
Hold the mic, Georgia Michelle.
I live at 419 Benton Court Street. And the gentleman, I, Trenton, he had said that it's Mockingbird Lane because they mimic. And he said that several times when he's been here, and I don't believe that these houses mimic the surrounding houses. I appreciate the fact that he showed pictures of the surrounding neighborhood. I don't, some of these houses are nice, but they all look like two-story monstrosities, and I feel like I'm betting a dead horse that I've been here saying this every time, that I don't live on the east side of town. I'm proud to live on the west side of town, and I've lived on there all my life. And the houses that are there, we do look the same, basically. I mean, there's different streets that have different times because they were built at different, different eras, but they're all from the 1950s. And these houses, to me, it's like you're building an island behind my house. Excuse me. And I'm, when I look out my backyard and have a barbecue or something, my deck is up a little bit, so all I'm going to see is monstrosities of roofs. And the houses that are around there are one-story houses for the most part. They're two- and three-bedroom houses with one bath. I'm not saying that you have to have one bath. You could do a two- and three-bedroom house with two baths or something, but these houses do not match the surrounding area. And I just feel like that it's not the east side of town, it's the west side of town. And I'm proud to live on the west side of town. So, yes, the houses are cracker, they're, they're tract homes. My house, my side of the street was built at one time, so all our houses are the same. The houses on the other side of the street, they're all built at the same time, so they all look kind of same. But we've all added our own flair to it. My parents added the porch on the front. Other people have changed the, they don't look all exactly the same, but they still look like they belong together. These houses don't look like they belong in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Vic in 40, 755 Broadway. Just to add a little bit of history to the conversation, the, there have been many ADUs built over garages, as you all know. And the way I understand, the way it was done was, if it was a single-story ADU, and it met all the setbacks and zoning requirements, there was no planning commission involvement. It would just be administrative, the state actually forced that on all the cities and counties. It would just be an administrative process. The two-story ADU, you know, over a garage or anywhere, it required a use permit. And that was the difference between one and two-story. Of course, this project went through a use permit process, so it would have been a part of that process. And I agree, I think with Bill's comment, that having a big, you know, more, or having variety in the size, do some small and some larger, would be the best mix. In terms of the architecture, it would be nice if there was more variety of architectural styles, if you want to use that term, and some, you know, contemporary buildings as well. And the size, I think, is, they are largely 2,000, I mean, a good percentage are 2,000 square feet, and, you know, the, the two that are 2,700 square feet are quite large, of course, but they're placed on the corners on, on MacArthur to, I guess, to maybe impress the passerby that there, it says, the subdivision has nicer homes or something to that effect. But that's just the square footage of the homes, if they could, if there's a way to reduce that. And I realize this already has a use permit, so that may be asking too much. And then the height, and the one and a half story, I think is a good direction to go. And some of the sketch elevations that were presented tonight, just personal opinion, those feel better to me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vic. Anyone else? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Barnett?
Thank you, Chair Felder. I want to thank Trent for bringing this presentation tonight. I thought it was very interesting. I think with regard to one-story homes... I thought it was very interesting. I think with regard to one-story homes and mimicking the surrounding neighborhood, I mean, in a perfect world, I would agree for two reasons. One, it mimics the surrounding neighborhood. Two, they would be cheaper homes. They would be, they would provide a lower entry point for perhaps first-time home buyers. I do think, though, that the reality is that is not going to happen. Not because it's up to us. I think the Housing Accountability Act, I think that would render, just in my view, I think this would probably render the project economically infeasible. And we don't, from what I understand, have the ability to, at this point, because we had about five meetings about it, and I remember having a conversation with an attorney, that we can't, we can't mandate any changes to the project that would render it economically infeasible at this point. Correct?
Correct.
And so I, just for members of the audience, I mean, we can't, we could try to require one-story homes. I don't know if we even want to, but it would, it would be a big process, and I don't think that would be economically feasible for the applicant. So what I do like are the addition of these one-and-a-half-story homes, which, especially these sketches that we're sort of seeing right now, I think they're thoughtful, and they look, I prefer these, obviously, the one-and-a-half, that sort of tries to mimic a one-story, but is actually a living space for two stories. So I appreciate the addition of those. And as many of those as economically feasible within the project, I would support. In terms of the overall design theme, I do generally like the overall design theme. I'm all for, I support earlier comments from the public and other commissioners about adding diversity of styles and plans, but I wouldn't want to go too crazy, because that could almost have another effect.
I'm thinking cottage and craftsman, sort of.
Yeah. But don't, you know, I wouldn't want to see like one Spanish-style, one like contemporary, you know, just as best as you can. I mean, as diverse as possible without making it look ridiculous, if that makes any sense.
Not a Picasso painting.
Yeah. I, in terms of, oh, I also really like the homes. I mean, they are large homes, but I just like the concept of that wraparound porch on MacArthur. Again, in a perfect world, I would have liked all of the homes to front MacArthur, but we can't change the tentative map at this point. In terms of the landscape, I'm sure, again, that, and we'll see that, and I don't think that'll, landscape is typically never a huge issue at this point. But what I would strongly support, and I'm sure other commissioners will have comments about that, are very good street trees that will grow large. I mean, there are subdivisions on, in some parts of town that were built 50 years ago, and, you know, the trees are still about as tall as I am. And some of that has to do with, you know, and we've already learned, the soil on this site can be difficult. And so if there are ways to, I don't, you know, this is not my field of expertise, but if we can have great-looking street trees, I think this would really add to the neighborhood and to the project. I, and then in terms of two-story ADUs, I support earlier comments of, I mean, I support them in general. I support the larger living spaces, as was described earlier by Commissioner Barbo's. But I would caution that the larger ADU is going to create a higher price point for the home, which will probably create a, you know, require a wealthier buyer. And to Commissioner Barnett's point, maybe those are the types of buyer that just don't want to rent out the back. And so I would love, as everyone described earlier, more information, like how many of these are actually being rented out, and are they sort of providing the desired effect? And I also like the top-right light fixture. So...
All right.
So in general, I think this is a great start. I share a lot of the concern and sentiment of the neighborhood, and recognizing the economic constraints, would appreciate a project that is as sensitive to that as possible, and as diverse in terms of style as possible without, as previously discussed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That second, that light fixture on the top right, I have on my house. But I wouldn't want to see it on every house.
Yes.
I like the idea of giving diversity to that architecture. Things tend to be really trendy, and right now, if I see one more modern farmhouse, I think I'll puke. So I don't want to see everything look the same. So I like that idea a lot. I like what you've done with the garages. I would definitely also encourage smaller houses, less square footage for inside, and more porches or outdoor areas outside, especially towards the front and where communities would gather. I like the idea of neighborhoods engaging with each other. And I think that when somebody goes to see the house, they're going to see a raw house. But once people live in the homes and the neighborhoods, they really feel connected to the community and the neighbors, I would like to see more of that outdoor space and less, and more towards the communal area out front, not hidden in the back, than just large square footage. A lot of these houses, too, with the ADUs, that price point does worry me, that you're going to get to the point where if the ADU is there and it's a larger size, that they're not going to be affordable for a lot of the, not only the first-time home buyers, but the move-up buyers. It could get pricey pretty quick with that much square footage, so that worries me. Though if they can rent it out, then they have some income, but they still have to qualify to buy that house. And so that's something that worries me. The ability to add it on in the future, possibly, but if it's there at the beginning and they don't have the money to qualify for that, that's something that I'm definitely concerned with. Single-story, two-story, I see that the neighborhood's mostly single-story, but I do think that the trend now is we want to not sprawl, and we want to have that concentration so that we can have more soil and water, the rain that can go into the soil and not just cover the whole land. So I, I'm okay with that two-story. I love the idea about the one-and-a-half story. I think that that's really a clever solution. I really like that. Overall, I think it's looking really good, and I think it's exciting. And the opportunity to have this kind of housing coming into Sonoma is super exciting, but I would definitely want to keep the price point as down as much as possible, knowing that you guys have to make a profit, but looking to see what you can do to reduce that overall size of some of those houses. 2,700 square feet is quite large. And then if you have an ADU, I just, I'd like to see those smaller. And then, again, just more of the communal space out front.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Trent, I want to ask you to do the impossible. I want you to do a tract house subdivision that doesn't look like a tract house subdivision, but is priced like a tract house subdivision, but offers diversity that doesn't look like a tract house division. I'm hearing a lot of two sides. You know, we talk so much about wanting workforce housing, and then we're asking for diversity and bigger and better and faster. I have spent the last 27 years of my life in Sonoma in a tract house. As an architect, I'm not super proud of it. I don't fly it up on a flagpole too often, but that's what I could afford. And, and I would love the impossible. I'd like diversity. I wouldn't even mind a couple of different styles. I do not share as much concerns about too much diversity, because I think part of the richness of a neighborhood is diversity. And I really do go back, I didn't talk a lot last time, but one of the comments that I did make was about the single-story. I do support single stories. There is a market out there for not two stories, maybe because I'm getting older and I don't like the idea of climbing up to a second story. But it also has a lot to do with the context of the neighborhood. And as much as creativity has gone into the one-and-a-half stories, it's still a bigger box than the neighborhood. And I think it is right to be sensitive to the neighborhood. And I'm not saying all single stories, you know, if you have 16 homes, you know, four single stories, couple monsters, but, but I really would like to see that, to really see true one-story homes. I like the idea of mixing up the size of the ADUs. Again, more price points. And lastly, I will join my fellow commissioners, say I would love to see great street trees. And crepe myrtles as street trees do not fall under the category of a great street tree. And we no longer have a public works director that feels that crepe myrtles were the only street tree known to mankind. That's it.
Our landscape architect is from Sonoma, so she'll take that to heart. She's very passionate about trying to do good for the city.
Before you go, I'm just going to interrupt for a minute, just to get consensus of the commission. We've hit the magic hour of 10:30, and we do have another item. And in fairness to the people who have been very patiently sitting there waiting to be heard, are you willing to keep going on the next item? All right. We won't send you home, then.
Bring you, Catherine.
Okay. Your turn.
Sure. Thank you for your presentation, Trent.
Thank you.
I like your, I like the new one-and-a-half-story designs. I thought they had some nice detail on them. And the profile was, I thought, attractive in the front, less massive. Also like the lights you like. I had those in my house here in Sonoma, the down, the sort of industrial downlight thing. It's very simple and not kitschy-looking, I think. For the next iteration of the project, would it be possible to have a 3D aerial oblique that shows the whole project and its context? Is that, is it time for that?
I can do, if it's okay with doing a less ornate massing study, I can provide that. Not so much the full-on making each of these homes a 3D model, just in case there's changes that admittedly starts getting pretty pricey if we keep changing that.
Yeah, just so we can get a feel for the, you know, the weight of everything and the heights. And can it be done within the context of the neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah, we can show, we can get the general heights around.
That would be fine. Thank you.
I think everybody's had a chance but me. I appreciate a lot of the comments that my fellow commissioners have made, and I certainly endorse most of them. I just hit a couple of the high points on what appeals to me. I definitely like the, the updates that tend towards the one-and-a-half story, that looked like one story. And I, if there's a possibility of even going all the way to a few one-story, that'd be great, because I do think keeping the square footage down to what you can economically support is worthwhile for our community to make houses as affordable as possible. In terms of the ADUs, I like a concept of mix of sizes. I can see that there is certainly a use for both of those. And I would encourage a few, a few of them being single-story, so that they are more for a single person that has a chance to find housing. And, and yet, some of the ones above the garages are also have useful purposes if there's a young family that can move in or, or a family members that might be able to share that space. So I'd like to see some mix in the ADUs. I think we've kind of hit, and I also go for as much diversity in style, not just all craftsman, mix it up a little bit, but, you know, like Commissioner Kelso Barr, that said, don't go wild on it. Try to keep it within bounds. But I think if it can be, give the appearance of not just tract homes, that's, that's a good thing, because we, we do have a lot of neighborhoods, not just on the east side, that are a very mix of homes. And so I think it'd be nice to continue that.
Sure.
With that, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question about the ADUs and, and the whole vesting issue. At this point, would the developer be able to eliminate any ADUs?
No, it was part of the conditions of approval for the map, that the planning commission desired to have those be part of the map, and that the applicant was required to build those.
Okay. And for the units, the parcels that do not have an ADU on it, those would seem to me to provide an opportunity to explore this one-story approach by creating a house with a different footprint. In other words, in many of these cases, you've got an ADU that's taking up a significant amount of the footage of the lot itself. If you don't have an ADU on that lot, then the structure of the house could be one-story, be, and extend further into it, not end up with less yard than anybody else who has an ADU, actually. It'd just be a longer, I'll use this term loosely, a ranch-style house is what I think they used to be called, where they're essentially long, long one-story homes. And so I think there's some potential in that, perhaps.
You and I were thinking the same thing.
Okay, thanks.
And if I could just chime in on the second-story ADU issue. Section 1940 040, height limits and height exceptions appears to allow us to make an exception to the 15-foot height limit, to the tune of about 30%. So that would allow a maximum of 19.5 feet, if the planning commission was willing to grant the exception.
I think at this point, I think we've given you a fair amount of direction, Trent.
Yes, sir.
And I think I'd be willing to wind it up so that we can move on to one more item. But I hope that you've gotten enough feedback that it gives you something to work with.
Very good feedback. Yes, thank you also very much. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, staff. Appreciate it for squeezing us in.
We will then move on to item 7.6, which is a study session on proposal for a planned unit development and tentative parcel map use permit for 1211 Broadway. And with that, get the staff report from Christina.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your patience tonight and for your consideration of this item. The project before us is a planned unit development, a tentative parcel map, and a use permit at 1211 Broadway. This is directly across from Adele Harrison Middle School, for those of you who aren't familiar with it. And the project site is 14,838 square feet. It is a long, narrow lot. It is currently developed with an 838-square-foot, 113-year-old, single-family residence. The historic evaluation has demonstrated that it is historically significant. There's a few trees, there's an existing water well. It's surrounded by a condo complex to the north that's going in right now, single-family residences to the south and to the west, and, as I mentioned, Adele Harrison Middle School. The property is in the Broadway corridor. It's zoned for mixed use. The allowed density is 20 units per acre, and the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet. Then required setbacks are 15-foot front. As the project is proposed, the side setback would be nine feet required by the code for the 21-foot-tall, two-story building, and the rear setback is 20 feet. The applicant is proposing to split the existing 14,000-square-foot lot into four lots, identified as one, two, three, and four. The PUD, through the PUD, the applicant is requesting relief from setbacks, site coverage, and minimum lot area. Through the use permit, the applicant is proposing the residential development that exceeds one residence on an existing parcel, which is why the use permit is required. Overall, the project would support six residential units, including the existing unit, so that it's a total of six, one existing, five new. There are, is proposed one new single-family residence and two new duplex buildings. And in the interest of time, I think everybody has hopefully had a chance to read the staff report. And I think I'd just like to open it up to the applicant to give their presentation.
Let me just...
Unless you have, sorry if you have questions for me first.
Do you have questions, the staff?
Is this, if this tentative map were to be approved, would the design of the buildings come back for this commission?
My understanding is that the PUD, you're approving the whole thing.
Okay, so it's not a typical... Okay, so it's not a typical?
Am I wrong?
But let me remind you, this is just a study session, so we're not.
I know, I'm just saying.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm, it will help inform my
Right.
comments, yes.
Yeah, all, if you recall, all of the entitlements that are necessary will come to the body that, uh, has the jurisdiction, so the answer would be yes. Whether we, whether we do a PUD that includes the design review component, I think that's what we'll be looking at.
But it's on an area of town where you, you know what I'm saying?
I thought the PUD, you're looking at everything.
Right.
Okay.
It will include the design review component.
Okay, thank you.
Christina, I just need clarification for my understanding. For mixed-use, you can have twenty units per acre, but the minimum lot size is eight thousand square feet?
Yeah, it's, it's sort of an interesting code issue that I'm sure we'll deal with at a later date. There's a lot of these in our code where, you know, the, the different requirements don't really make sense together.
So in a case like that, which one takes precedence?
They have to, they have to meet them all, except for the ones that they're asking for exceptions through the PUD process. And it's kind of, through the, the PUD process is intended to give us, like, you guys flexibility. And so, you know, you're trying to get a better project by making these exceptions. Okay.
If there's no more questions, then we'll open it up to the applicant.
Hi, everyone, uh, thank you so much for your time and staying so late. Uh, my name is Sharon Bijon, and I'm the developer of the project at one two one one Broadway. And I just wanted to spend a couple minutes talking about our project, and give you some insight of how the project came about, and what my goal is with the project. So I moved to Sonoma in two thousand and thirteen with my wife and three kids, and at the time, we fell in love with Sonoma, and everything that it's about, the small-town feel, everyone in town knowing each other, and overall the sense of community that you don't find around too much. And it's been a perfect place for us to raise a family, and we've had a lot of our friends actually move up here after realized, after they realized what a great place it is to live. One of the things that has been a challenge for most people that I know that have wanted to move to Sonoma is finding housing that it's affordable, uh, due to the limited amount of space and housing that's available. It seems that the prices keep raising every, considerably every year, and making it very difficult for most people to afford nice houses at a reasonable price. Especially for young families, or first-time homeowners like myself, most houses are not a reality. After the fires of two thousand and seventeen, I saw a lot of my friends move out of town because they could no longer afford to rebuild, or rent, uh, the rental properties that they were staying at were no longer available. And the opportunity at one two one one Broadway just happened, and my close friend of mine told me about a small parcel that was being sold by the owner, and I thought it would be a great opportunity to develop a small, six-unit project that would create affordable housing, um, for first-time homeowners and young families. I decided to reach out to Stanley Sidowicz, who I've known for many years, and have admired his work and understanding on how to build beautiful projects that encompass the true style and aesthetics of its surroundings. Um, I didn't want to create a cookie-cutter project that looks like every other project that's being developed, uh, but rather going back to the true historical architecture of Sonoma. And, uh, understanding how those elements could be used in our project design to create something that's really unique and special, and that captures what Sonoma was and is still about. We did a lot of research, and studied many historical buildings dating back decades, and I'm really proud of what Stanley created to bring part of old Sonoma back to life, an updated two thousand and nineteen version. Our project is affordable, affordable, very much environmentally green, and most importantly, we're creating new housing that most people could afford in a time where we desperately need additional housing in Sonoma. So, um, I hope you can support our project and bring our vision to life, and I'll let Stanley kind of talk about the overall project and details of it, and obviously we'll answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sharon. I'm Stanley Sidowicz of Sonoma Architects, and, um, essentially, the, this is, uh, the location of our project, uh, along Broadway, this is the town square. And, um, it's in the historic overlay zone. And this is a image of how the completed project would look, where the existing hundred and thirteen-year-old, uh, Victorian house is moved to the south, and, um, set up on new, much more stable foundations, and completely restored and repaired. Here you can see, uh, an elevation of, um, our project in the center, and, uh, the, under-construction project to the right. And you can see the modesty and of, of the scale of our project in compared to, um, the project that's, um, currently under construction. This is a view from the street, um, at the, to, to the entries of, um, our, um, new building, which is behind the existing Victorian. As, um, as Sharon said, um, we began by really thinking about the kind of unique architecture of Sonoma, and the memories that I always had of Sonoma were really these amazing buildings that were, um, representative of a, a kind of, um, modesty and, and directness about building that I felt was really, um, part of the kind of idea of a rural town. And, um, in looking at the, um, Page and Turnbull kind of definitions of these buildings, um, the basically Spanish colonial, uh, Mission Revival, and Monterey Colonial, um, a series of characteristics, um, are defined, which are actually the underpinning of the concept for our building. So one to two stories in height, linear plan or courtyard plan, small windows, porches, ground-level arcade, and multiple entries. And with Mission Revival, low-pitched or flat roofs, arcades and arcaded porches, and lack of decorative detailing. And in the Monterey Colonial, these are all quotes from the report, um, two-story height, low-pitched roof, uh, second-story balcony, wood cladding, and full-height fenestrations. So these are really these, um, quite remarkable, um, and unique buildings that, um, form the sort of backbone of the history of the town. And, um, these are the buildings, really, that were the inspiration for, um, our workforce housing, which you see illustrated here. So our porches now become, um, carports, um, but you can see the kind of linear organization, the repetitive nature, the sort of modesty and, and simplicity of the, the kind of, um, way of building for really accomplishing this goal of, of simplicity. Again, the kind of minimal visual impact of our project, which is mostly screened by the existing, um, hundred and thirteen-year-old Victorian, and the view from the street, the idea of matching, um, the materials of the Victorian as the siding of the new construction, and the familiarity as well, in terms of the kind of proportioning of the vertical kind of double-hang, uh, windows with a cantilevered carport, which becomes the sort of equivalent of the porch. This is the kind of site condition, and, um, you can see the lot division that we have, um, established with essentially two single-family houses, and then two duplexes. In the front, you see that the existing Victorian will be dedicated as a BMR, even though, um, strictly speaking, it's not required, because we are only building, um, single and duplex buildings. The other thing that I'd like to point to in this view of the project is the modesty and scale of our buildings compared to, um, the kind of coverage and bulk of the, the neighborhood. So our buildings are actually very, um, delicate and, and compact in relation to the land, uh, compared to what surrounds it. This is just a illustration of the setbacks and driveways, um, and I just want to go through them, because, um, the, the, uh, this setback, which is the yard setback, is eleven foot three. On the drive aisle side, um, from the fence line to, um, the face of the building, we have twenty-four feet. The width of the actual roadway, when you deduct the size of the carport, is fourteen feet, and we have an eighteen-inch planter, which reduces, um, the drive aisle to twelve foot six, which we've discussed with Ellen Jones on two occasions, and he supports. We also established the location of, uh, the fire hydrant right at the center here, under his direction, and, um, the, the fact that there will be sprinklers throughout. So the system of, um, fire track access, and, um, the, the whole kind of roadway and driveway has been vetted, uh, through his, through discussions with him. And this is a typical ground-floor plan, and I think the key idea of the project is actually described here, where every household also has a private outdoor courtyard. So the kind of tradition of California living, which isn't, um, like Cape Cod, but is about the kind of indoor-outdoor relationship, is key to the idea of creating these very compact houses, which are less than twelve hundred square foot, but also have the expansion of, uh, an outdoor space, which is almost equal to the indoor space, so that it is a appropriate kind of house for a, a kind of family condition. This is the second level, and I'll describe these two levels at this scale, where you can see on the left, the, um, ground-floor plan, with the, the entry to the house of a little shared, um, communal space, um, the stair going up, whoops, I just have to go back, the, the stair going up, a coat closet, a powder room, a large kind of living space with a kitchen, which kind of slides out into the, um, courtyard, which is number five. And then, um, this sort of open area, which can be arranged, um, more freely by the, the occupants, who can claim it. I, I thought it was very nice what someone said before about how all the houses started quite neutral and the same, but people transformed them. And this is sort of the underpinning of our architecture, which is that we give a, a kind of frame, rather than a picture, for the occupation to sort of transform through living. On the right-hand side, you see the second-floor plan, which is essentially a bedroom, a washer-dryer, a bathroom, and a master suite with its own closet area and bathroom. This is the kind of, um, experience of this, um, kind of California life, of the outside and inside merged by these sliding doors, which can almost, um, dissolve the entire sense of the interior into that courtyard, which is almost the same size as the inside, sort of conditioned space. And, um, here you see the way the sort of kitchen slides out into the garden, and, um, the view of that garden court. And one of the things that, uh, really struck me the first time I went to the site was that there was a fig tree, it was in, um, bloom, and it was damaged, and, and branches had been broken, but it had beautiful fruits on it. And so the, um, decision to treat the landscape as, as a kind of edible landscape, where each house is given two fig trees, and the walls of, um, these courts are actually grapevines, which, um, leads me to introduce the landscape architect, who can explain a little more about.
Hi, I'm Chris Yates, I'm the landscape architect. Uh, there were three key features we wanted to include in the planting design for this project. We wanted edible plantings to be one of the most important parts of them. We wanted seasonal interest, and also, uh, low-water use. And, um, at the street, um, which, uh, which one do you have?
Just tell me all ten of them.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Um, at the street, we have a bosque of, uh, eight persimmon trees, um, which create a beautiful, lush, uh, colorful entrance to the project, um, and are not crape myrtles, as, so, someone noted. Beneath the, um, the persimmon trees, we have a mass planting of, uh, a deep purple lavender, which lavender always looks gorgeous when it's just a sea of, um, of color. And then on the side, uh, on the right-hand side and the back lot, um, we're proposing doing a continuous planting of apple and pear espaliers, and alternating them, so it's an apple pear, apple pear. And, you know, I mean, they're gorgeous when they're in fruit, but they're also, the fall color is, is really beautiful as well. So we were trying to think about, um, seasonal plantings, um, and not just focus on how it looks, you know, in the middle of the summer. Let's see, I think as Stanley mentioned, um, each unit has two, uh, fig trees in the backyard, and we wanted to, um, have all the fig trees be different varieties. And there's so many amazing figs out there, um, we thought it'd be fun to, uh, mix it up and just have each unit have two different varieties. And then on the back, um, fence line of each unit, uh, there's a deer fence, and those would be covered in grapes. And then, um, finally, we're proposing turf block, um, as our driveway surface, uh, which is permeable, um, and also aesthetically appealing. And these images, you know, just show some of the fall color and, uh, the overall plant palette. And, I'll.
I just wanted to point one other, um, feature of the design out. The, the roof is entirely dedicated to, um, an energy reservoir. So, um, you know, the, the most efficient, um, way to do this is to give the greatest amount of exposure, which because of the southern, um, orientation, um, encouraged us to think about a flat roof. It was also, um, a, a sort of series of studies that we did to see the minimum impact on, uh, the, the actual, um, existing Victorian house. I did want to just mention that, um, this is a detail of the turf block that we are proposing, which is actually fifty percent, um, permeable. And when you, I know that this is a controversial issue, but it's also a fact that it's fifty percent permeable. So when you take this, um, into account, uh, the site coverage with permeable paving ends up at fifty percent for the entire project. Again, a view of the, uh, idea of this building as a sort of, um, Sonoma-type, um, updated into contemporary form, um, the, um, the front view with, um, the persimmons and, and lavender that create this kind of public face, um, the fact that the low building behind is barely visible from the street, and, um, again, the sort of scale of our, modest project in comparison to the buildings beyond, and a view of the finished project, which doesn't really alter the landscape of Broadway in a significant way.
Thank you. Do you have questions of the applicant?
Mr. Brown. I think it's a quick and easy question. On, on some of your renderings, it was a little difficult for me to, to determine the roof that you mentioned, so just for my clarification, the roof on the, uh, non-historic structure is a flat roof?
Correct.
Okay.
So the purpose being to create the optimum exposure for photovoltaics and solar water heating. So the roof is no longer a, a kind of, you know, one of the actual requirements is to not expose too much of the, uh, solar panels, which are not really, uh, very, like, aesthetic, in my opinion. So keeping them flat, which doesn't affect their performance, actually also eliminates them visually.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I think you've come up with a really interesting solution for a lot that has some constraints on it. I think that it, I mean, for me, good design has got a couple of, couple of points. One of them is live a. One of them is livability, and these small units are very livable. I think you're, that the common area space and the outdoor space, which is private, is really highly desirable in this town, and, you know, in California in general. The stark modern architecture, when I first saw the small pictures on my screen, I wasn't, couldn't quite get it, but now I understand that that simple design really lends itself to livability on the inside of the space. And the frontage, assuming you finish it off as it is with the cottage, I think it's a delightful juxtaposition with the modern and the old Victorian cottage in the front. I think it's, I think it's really charming and delightful, the way it lays out. What I don't quite understand is how the traffic in and out is going to work with the parking. Could you go through how that's going to work in terms of the, you've got a twelve-and-a-half foot driveway outside of the parking? My first question was, do you drive through those parking canopies, or do you have to back in parallel?
They're twenty-four foot wide, so they're basically like a parallel parking condition.
So, you have to back in?
No, you don't have to back in, you can drive in sideways.
Drive through?
You can drive in, or you could back in. The turning is a three-point turn at the end of the set of houses. So, you know, it's not a highway, and, but it's a series of six occupants that are using this road, and there's three points of turnout if there happen to be two cars coming at the same time. But, you know, I live in a building with eighteen units, and with much narrower kind of maneuverability, and it works for people who, neighbors and friends, and can, and live together.
Just to be clear, there's three turning points on the area that cars can go in and reverse.
Can you point those out?
Yeah. There's the drawing.
So, it's fourteen feet wide?
It's twenty-four feet wide.
With parking spaces that are ten feet wide, right?
Well, there are areas where there's no parking like this.
The driving area is twelve and a half.
Well, it's fourteen feet with a six, with an eighteen-inch planting strip, which won't be continuous. So, we can, you know, we can have parts of it at the full fourteen-foot width, which is the required width of a driveway. I mean, it's a balance between, I mean, I'd like your kind of input on this. It's kind of a balance between, look, we want to save the courtyards, you know, that's the whole reason for coming to live in these houses. So, you know, it's a lot to balance out, you know, on a fifty-foot width, and this is, I mean, these turning radiuses, it's a simple three-point turn to, you know, if you came in and you drove in straight to your parking, rather than backing, you would just go to the end, or you would back out if you were in one of the first houses. I've run this through a driving program. There's a program which actually does the maneuvering of this, and it all, you know, it's all worked really well.
And, sorry, one of the things also that kind of gave us confidence is we did meet with the fire department, with Alan Jones, and obviously, this was the most critical thing for the fire trucks, and we went through all this with him, and he was okay with it. So, that gave us confidence, obviously, if a fire truck is accessible, then for cars with the same, which are much smaller, having the turning points at the end of the lot here, where they can turn about, it would be, it would make sense. And, you know, a lot of thought went into all of the details of this. It seems like a simple project, but it's a very small lot, and we tried to utilize it the best as we could, and this was, I mean, I think Stanley did a great job coming up with solutions to kind of facilitate everything to make it work.
Just to follow up on the parking and access issues, how many parking stalls are there per unit?
Well, there are eight parkings.
Stanley, yeah, thank you. Eight parkings in total, one point five for the duplexes, and then, one each for the two single units at the front. So, that's the code required parking count.
And then, it would be your expectation that all guests and families that had more than one car would park on the street?
We actually have two additional spaces for visitors.
When I first looked at this, I was kind of, didn't know what to make of those, the stark contrast between the Victorian cottage and the architecture, the flat roofs principally on the back units. I understand the idea behind them. And the question I had is, were you, or would it be possible to have some of the same benefits if you had shed roofs sloped to the south, so that they had all south-facing slopes, where you could put all of your solar stuff, but the side profile would be not of a flat-roofed building? Would that work?
We've tried that out, and we actually ran it by Alice Duffy, who wrote the HRE report, and her recommendation to us in the evolution of the design was to go with the flat roofs, because when you have a mono pitch, you know, over the width of the building, it obviously, you know, if you did a pitch like this, you lose half of your exposure for solar collecting. So, if you do a mono pitch, it actually becomes quite an obtrusive element. And, you know, we balanced out the sort of pros and cons of it, and decided that it was, you know, like, more appropriate to keep the Victorian as the kind of key presence without a big, I mean, if you look at the next-door house, there's a massive, which is being built now, you know, there's, it's quite a big house, but then there's a massive house behind it, and we didn't want to do that, you know, we thought.
No, I understand. Absolutely love the indoor/outdoor thing. I haven't seen anyone do what you've done on these, and I just really applaud that design feature. It's wonderful.
You know what I love about Sonoma is what great weather you have here. It's really such a great place to be outdoors.
Well, we eat outside about five months out of the year, and this would be that much more convenient, because you just walk right out from your kitchen.
I mean, I don't imagine anyone ever switching on their cooktop, because they're going to have a gas barbecue, you know, and it'll just be in the same counter out there. I mean, I think they'll be really great places to live, honestly, and if we can pull it off, they'll be cheap, too, because, you know, we're going to try really hard to build them simply, I mean, slab-on-grade, you know, simple wood siding. I mean, we want to, our goal is really to make them as, and that's another reason why, you know, wasting a lot of material on a roof doesn't seem of much value, when you can actually get all the performance without the waste. I mean, we're trying to like scrape every dime, you know, to really build them.
Well, don't you have to put some impermeable surface underneath all that you?
I mean, there's a waterproof membrane, but, you know, we've got quite good at making flat roofs. We've been doing it for over a hundred years, and we've got the technology down now.
I guess this question is for the developer. Obviously, the thrust of this was workforce and affordable.
Yes.
What do you consider affordable? What are you going to be selling these for?
These are going to be in the six hundred to seven hundred range.
Per unit, not per, are you going to be selling them as a duplex?
Yes, correct. They're individual units, so each unit is two bedrooms, two and a half baths.
So, are you going to be selling them, so you're not going to be selling them as duplexes? You'll be able to buy each individual unit?
Correct.
Okay. My second question is, in terms of, obviously, there's been some discussion already in terms of access, and like, the narrowness of the lot, obviously, and the, was there ever any thought given, considering the lot to the north is under construction, like a shared driveway agreement, to sort of better, you know, it's just a pity, really, that the lot to the north is being developed, this is being developed, you have two driveways right next to each other?
I reached out to them. It wasn't the most pleasant experience. They had a hard time getting approval. It took them about three years, and they didn't, I don't, I think they just wanted to move forward. And their project is completely different, because they're actually like putting a huge building right in the front, and then they have parking in the middle, and then three big structures in the back. So, I think the way we've developed it is kind of very minimal in terms of the amount of area that we're using, but it's still functional. Like Stanley said, we've ran this through the driving system, just showed the turning radiuses, and making sure that everything works, and it does, and we showed actually all those to the Alan Joneses as well, and, you know, although it's narrow, it works. There's no like limitations in terms of the amount of space that there is, and restrictions in terms of cars being able to get in and out.
All right, so if the shared driveway isn't an option, why then the, why a north driveway? Why not a south driveway and keep?
For the exposure of the sun, so you wouldn't be able to have those outdoor areas if we put it the other way around.
Right, okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
All right, Jim.
I love this project.
Thank you.
Conceptually, when I first looked at it, I was like, wow, I want to live there. My furniture wouldn't fit, though. But I do have some questions, looking at the parking, are this, each individual parking space going to be deeded to an individual unit? Because you have eight spots, each one seems to have one spot, and I'm, those extra spots, when you get all these neighbors moved in, how are you going to deed those parking spaces out?
So, they'll be designated for each space, so they'll be numbered for each?
One unit per?
One and a half per, so there'll be like one that's shared, and then, there's a total of eight. So, there would be one and a half per the duplexes, and then, one for each individual unit there.
And one for the Victorian.
And one for the Victorian.
But, one and a half with the duplex, I don't know how that works when I want it and somebody else wants it. How do we? Yeah.
So, it's, so there'll be one designated space per each one, and then, the rest, from my understanding, it's going to be for?
For visitors.
For visitors, so there'll be one for each specific unit, and then, there'll be one open for whoever essentially uses it, or for guests that are coming in. So, we've essentially set it up in a way where it meets the requirement of parking spaces required for each unit, and then, we have the additional for the visitors, or if, you know, if it's available as a first-gone, first-served basis, essentially.
Yes, neighbors work, somebody will always claim it, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Put some thought into that.
Sure. And to be honest with you, I mean, it's very tricky. I mean, we've tried many different ways to get around this, and try to figure out the best solution, but again, it's either we use, we lose the courtyard, and, which obviously is the whole purpose of a big, big part of this project, to give it that exposure, or, you know, people living there understand, okay, we'll have one unit, and like in a lot of buildings, I mean, it's just like visitor parking, or, you know, it's available space when people come, they can, they can use it, and if it's open, and if not, then obviously they have their existing parking space, that parking space that's allocated for them specifically.
Okay, and a storage area within the carports for bicycles, et cetera?
We do have, yes, correct. We have actually in between, if you see the space of the buildings, there's, that's exactly what it's for, actually.
Okay.
So, between, I can show you over here, but there will be bicycle storage for each for all the units in these spaces here.
Okay.
We'd like to have more storage, honestly, but it's.
We just all need less stuff, really.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. If you want one of these, sell all your furniture, and go to Ikea, buy a bed, a table, and a sofa, and that's what we need.
Marie Kondo, this is like, you know, the fine art of tidying up and living with less stuff, but no, I really applaud the size, the scale, the way that you took that historic property and moved it to the front, and kept it as the frontage on Broadway. I really, well done.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to open it up to the public now, and let anybody else care to speak.
Hi, my name's Carol Marcus, eight seven three First Street West. I've been so excited tonight just to come here in support of this project. I think it's a fabulous solution. It's refreshing that we're showing innovative solutions, twenty-first century solutions, and I love the way that Mr. Seidowitz described the project as modest and direct, which I think it is. I think it's exactly what Sonoma needs for its infill parcels, and it's also refreshing to see that the, while the car, it's dealt with, but it's not taking priority over this site, like so many other projects that we see come before this. So, I was delighted to come here and sit here since six o'clock tonight, six-thirty tonight, just to support this project, and job well done. It's fabulous.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening, almost good morning. Scott Murray, four eight nine nine Grove Street, and I am the property owner at eleven eighty-one. I am your neighbor. So, I first want to say, I wish you the best of luck on this project.
Could you address to the commission, please?
Sorry, so, Mr. Shalom?
Yes.
I wish him the best on the project. I would love to see you build everything that you can build within the guidelines and requirements of the city. So, I do want to first say that I do take a little bit of notice in regards to the comments on our buildings, because the reason that our buildings are clustered in the back is a lot of the comments that came from these commission meetings. This project seems to be asking for a lot of exemptions that we didn't get, and I'm just going to start chipping away at those. So, the first one is the side yard setbacks. These buildings are being shoved together to the point that there's five feet in between the buildings. Literally, I can touch both buildings. When we split our buildings, we were required to have a ten-foot setback in between the two buildings. I don't see any reason why the setbacks on this building should be any different than what we had to have in ours, per the city guidelines. The second is the issue of parking. Everybody's talking about this parking, and they keep discussing the twelve-foot, twelve-and-a-half foot, but even on the design, right out of the entry, there's a twelve-foot pinch point, right into the, at the very first carport. Second is, by staff recommendation, the driveway needs to be twenty feet wide. That's part of why our units had to be shoved to the back, rather than being able to be alongside a driveway, is our property required a two-lane entrance in and out for vehicles coming in, for be able to pass each other. As I said, in the recommendations, that's one of the items that are addressed, that there needs to be a twenty-foot driveway. This project doesn't have it. That's why everybody's talking about all these courtyards. Well, you can have all this when you're not meeting the other requirements that are, that the city has mandated. The other part is, it's two lanes for cars to pass back and forth. This is absurd, trying to think of any vehicle other than a Prius or a Fiat's going to be able to fit through this, or be able to turn around in the back end of this. There's discussions that, there's turnouts, but there's also discussions at the same time, that that's the guest parking, that this project doesn't have. So, if you have guest parking, then where, if there's supposedly guest parking on this project, where is it? Because the only thing that we see are the turnouts, and if there's guest parking there, then you have no turnout. So, that was part of the reason why we were required to have a twenty-foot driveway. I don't see any reason why this project shouldn't be held to the same standards.
I'm going to have to ask you to wind it up pretty soon.
I've been waiting here since six-thirty.
I understand. I'll give you a little bit more.
Okay. The second, the last issue, or one of the second-to-last issues, is the storm drainage. The storm drainage on this property ties into the storm drainage on our property, not the easement that is actually directly to the west. Our storm drainage was sized for our project and through our civil engineer. It wasn't designed to take on the storm drainage from another property, which from what I understand, you're not allowed to discharge into somebody else's property. So, that isn't designed properly either. And the only other comment I have is in regards to the front unit, that everybody is saying that's great, that, you know, keeping it down low. We have to remember, that was a historic building. They- You have to remember, that was a historic building. They have to keep the building the way it is and it was a one-story. Reason our building in the front is two stories is we're required to have a twenty-foot driveway alongside of it and the only thing that we could do to be able to get enough square footage was go up. So we would have loved to have had a smaller one-story building like we used to have on the front of the building. But that wasn't feasible by the mandates from the, from the council. So like I said, I, I'm sorry to bring up the bad points. I really do wish you the best. I really do want to see you build the project. But it needs to be built to the same guidelines that we were held to just a year ago. So, thank you.
Thank you.
But there's a lot of false information on that. No, there is, because actually the turning point is not a parking spot, it's actual.
Please let, uh, we have to address things to the commission and you've had your chance to speak and it's a study session, so I may give you a chance to rebut at the end, but let's let the rest of the public speak.
Good evening again. Eight seven three First Street West, Bill Willers. This is one of the most sensitively designed buildings that's, or projects that Sonoma has received as a study session. This is a complete proposal. It's a complete thought. And it fulfills everything that our general plan is looking to fulfill in producing housing in this community. We cannot, we cannot overcar our community and have a community that is the one that we love. This project is Sonoma. It's a modern expression of Sonoma. It's values the historic building that's on the property and it builds buildings for today. These buildings are wonderful to live in. This lower space that connects to the courtyard to the south is a wonderful experience. Our home enjoys the same thing and it's how we live here. Mr. Siedowitz completely understands the Sonoma vet vernacular and has expressed it in a project that is superior to anything that this planning commission has seen in years. It's ironic, almost forty years ago, Stanley ripped me during a design crit in, in, um, my last design crit of, of my college experience. But I'm so glad that he's here today in Sonoma.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, Vic Conforti. And I, I'm humbled by your, by these designers here. It's amazing. When I first saw this, I had, I, I started laughing, or not, with joy, to see something like this and I realized, whoa, this is really stretching the, the imagination. It, there are some compromises with cars and parking, et cetera, but this is worth it, uh, so. It's, uh, you know, so elegant and espe- especially the, the derivation of these long historic buildings, the Mission, the Blue Wing Inn, the barracks. To at, turn that into an abstract architectural expression is, uh, is wonderful. He's inspired me to, to, uh, re- you know, reinvigorate my practice. Thank you.
Chad Mall, fifteen West MacArthur. Um, I am a, a civil engineer here in town and I think it's a shame that they couldn't come together to kind of merge the driveways. But, um, with that being said, I have worked on numerous projects that have had less than twenty-foot driveway widths. I think this is a pretty creative solution with the turnaround and, uh, parallel parking. And, um, on Broadway apartment complexes I've done have had a similar, uh, width. And if Alan Jones is okay with it, if fire is okay with it, if cars can actually work with it, I don't see why this shouldn't work as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just clarify for the record real quick, um, the fire department has a condition of approval that the width be fourteen feet and they have not removed that. You spoke with him. He verbally told you that he's comfortable with the plans, but he did not change the conditions of approval. So the conditions of, the current conditions of approval are for a fourteen-foot driveway.
And what is it currently?
Twelve and a half feet.
Come to the podium, please.
So just to be clear, we do have twenty-four-foot driveway, so ten, we, actually it's more than twenty feet. Um, so ten feet of that is for the parking space, which leaves the remainder of fourteen feet. And then one and a half feet of that, or approximately one and a half feet was for the planter, so we can remove the planter to have the fourteen feet of space, which is what is required. In regards to the connection that he was, um, asking about, it's actually public. We did check into it, so that's not an issue and, um, we can discuss that if you'd like. Um, and there is a turnaround at the end of the, the parcel, which is not related to the parking spaces, which is specifically meant for turnarounds. So just to address a couple of questions here.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing then and bring it back to the commission.
If I can just ask?
Yes.
Comments to act of the lateness of the night. So stretching the imagination, as Vic mentioned, is, is really cool. And you have a PD process in your municipal code that allows for creativity. And obviously, we're sensitive to the need for housing in Sonoma as a staff. The PD does allow you flexibility in some cases to alter things, as opposed to a variance that's also built into your municipal code. These are very different things. So flexibility is there to help you be creative in design. Most of the time, in my experience, has been to deal with natural constraints, you know, where you kinda can't do it because of a river, stream or massive tree, whatever, some kind of topographical thing. So it's, it's commendable that we're getting creative with these very long, narrow lots. That being said, I, I would be interested in hearing a little bit more about the, the question that Commissioner Barnett, younger Barnett, uh, mentioned, uh, that Kelso mentioned, uh, regarding the, the location of the existing structure, because from a SEQA standpoint, if you seen, if you look in the staff report, we haven't, the applicant has requested a class thirty-two exemption. We haven't opined one way or the other yet, uh, one way or the other yet. And so we're wanting to hear your comments, figure out how that builds or doesn't build into our view of SEQA relative to the historic nature of the si- of the structure. And so the question that was asked, I won't try to put words into Commissioner's mu- uh, mouth that, uh, he wasn't intending, but the question of the house in that particular location, can this site be developed with that structure staying there? I understand that it, that the quick response was with respect to, uh, shade or, uh, solar access, I think. So I would be interested in hearing just a little bit about, about that, 'cause I'm sure they've looked at it. I've also read the, the historical report that's in the packet as well, so just trying to temper those kind of qualitative things. And I'd be interested to hear from the applicant a little bit about whether or not the structure could stay there in its location. Notwithstanding it's being moved from the north to the south.
You know, um, in, in the historic resource evaluation, it was made clear that the historic value of that hundred and thirteen-year-old house had nothing to do with context. It was about the object itself. In fact, there was even a discussion about the potential to move it to an entirely other site. So it's quite clear in the report, if you read it, that, um, the location of it itself is of no consequence. It's just the object itself, the object. And so, you know, because we have to rebuild the foundations and because we're trying to control the economies of this project, it just worked out coincidentally that we could build a, a foundation exactly adj- next to the existing house and move it over without having the difficulty of building and underbuilding the existing house.
So I'm not trying to be argumentative, again, because of the lateness of the hour, but I've got the port, report from APD Preservation LLC and the criteria used by the, uh, the National Park Service, Secretary of the Interior Standards. There's a decorative statement in there regarding that for this project. And I don't see where it says what you've just said about having no consequence. That's not in this report, so maybe.
Is that the Alice Duffy report?
This would be the one thirty-third of July, two thousand eighteen. The answer is yes.
Will we definitely?
Maybe we'll highlight it and we'll send it over, 'cause she's spec-
I'll go right here.
So I don't, I mean, I, I'm just wanting to read through it right now. I'm, she, I can find it specifically and maybe email Christina, but, uh, we have three options and to, just to show you how sensitive we were to this project and the historical house also, we could have, uh, taken it down, but obviously it was a much longer process. She gave us the option to move it off-site, but uh, as Stanley said, the, it's not the location, it's actually the significance of the historical house itself. Or she said the most efficient and the most practical way would be to actually just move it over and maintain all the integrity of it, which we did. So we didn't wanna, it would, it, it's costing us a lot more money to actually preserve it and move it over rather than tearing it down. So we've taken all these things, um, into account to make sure that, you know, we, we'd be as, as careful as possible. But I'll address that, but a hundred percent, I, she clearly stated in there, which I'll, I'll send over so we can see.
Commissioner Barnett?
Does Commissioner Long there have a question?
I was just, no, I was just reading here, the report that I'm reading says adjusting the position of the building on the same lot does not impact the integrity of the setting and does not constitute a substantial adverse change. That's on page one, under summary, it's the fourth, um, highlight. I'm just, I'm just pointing out what.
No, I know, but I'm saying.
I'm not arguing with any of that, I'm just pointing out the content.
I was just gonna say it's a good segue for discussion of, uh, SEQA.
Yes.
And the exemption. So before we even talk about the project, or my thoughts about the project, um, I wanna make my thoughts clear on the exemption. This class thirty-two exemption is, I would say apparently been used in Sonoma sporadically over the last fifteen years, not often. But in my reading of the code, it, um, you know, in the discussion section and in my view, uh, infill is defined as in an urbanized area and it's an infill development. I'm not getting into the urbanized area discussion of this, where Sonoma is not an urbanized area. But if you throw that out and say that this class thirty-two exemption is allowed in Sonoma, um, you have to, there are a few things you have to consider, but one of them is strict, as I'm sure you know, strict compliance with the code.
Yes.
Standards, guidelines, et cetera. The PUD, the very concept of the PUD means you can play and be flexible with the code. And so I don't understand how, and maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, how this exemption can even be applied for because it's on a PUD, number one. Number two, we are dealing with a historic resource and there's a higher level of scrutiny when it comes to SEQA and obviously historic resources. We have this, um, report from Alice Duffy. I used to be in a former life on the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission and I've seen many of these reports and sometimes in situations like this, we, um, call for peer reviews. Especially when the historic resource was adjacent to such a contemporary project. I don't know if that's something we would be doing here, but that would be part of an inj- an initial study if there wasn't an exemption. Third, another important part of the SEQA process in general and, um, uh, is, is traffic and circu- you know, circulation. And considering the location of this across from Adelle Harrison, um, considering a, you know, quite narrow driveway when you consider the parking spaces, people coming in and out. There's no turn lane, obviously. Um, I think learning more about the traffic and circulation, and you said you've done some analysis on that, would be helpful as part of an initial study. So, um, before we even talk about the project, I guess perhaps, I don't know how you wanna do this, if we wanna talk about the exemption, um, I don't, I just don't think it, it. Someone agrees with me. Um, uh, I don't think this qualifies for an exemption.
So just so you know, the property next door, which actually he was discussing, is, was exempt from SEQA and it's exactly the same lot size. So, uh, you guys should know why that was exempt, because it's literally the same exact site. Same size, same dimensions. And that parcel was exempt.
Um, well, well, first of all, if you're talking about anything that happened prior to twenty seventeen, I mean, we've seen all night that it's been a disaster, okay? Number, I mean, that might be a little extreme, but, um, so number two, um, I also heard that that project next door also was subject to much stricter requirement, you know, requirements. And so if we wanna exempt you from SEQA, that's fine, but then we might have to, you know, it's, you can't have it both ways. I'm, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Can I just, um, make a statement? You know, we're living in a housing crisis in California. Yesterday, um, the statistics came out that the shortage of housing in California is equal to the shortage in the whole country. So, you know, I think it behooves all of us to work towards finding a way to make housing happen. So instead of trying to put roadblocks, we should be thinking about how we could.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't mean.
Let me finish, please. I think we should all be looking for ways to make projects move forward. And I, I would appreciate it if that was the approach. I'm working in lots of different cities and, you know, I, I mean, I'm finding that in many, many places, that's the attitude that people are taking. And if it isn't gonna be the attitude, it's going to become the attitude. 'Cause the state are actually trying to face the crisis that we live in. So let's try and work towards a way to get this building to get built.
Are you going to, uh, come?
Uh, I'd like to share a few comments on the project overall. This, uh, as people have suggested, is a very difficult site because it is so narrow and so deep. And I concur with a number of voices that have spoken out and they've said that this is, uh, a, a creative solution. And, uh, they've thought outside the box. And my ears were perked up when they said it was indeed affordable housing and I'm just glad that I don't have to qualify for affordable housing when I'm at my age. But having said that, I, I think that we at times do have to make some concessions and we do have to have trade-offs. And we can't always have our cake and eat it too and we can't always, um, meet every goal to the letter of the law. I'm envisioning a couple of things. I'm envisioning that, yeah, parking's gonna be a little bit challenging, but we've got plenty of examples where even under other standards, parking is challenging. And I, I think the concept of preserving, whether it, one could argue whether it would be required or not, is a plus. Think it picks up on the frontage vernacular along Broadway well. At first, I, I found it a little bit, um, jarring, uh, juxtaposing the old with what was quite contemporary. And having heard more of the rationale and the pluses and minuses of what this simple kind of linear architecture is creating, I, I, I can live with this kind of departure. I think the landscape is gonna be important and I would strongly suggest if you can negotiate with the fire marshal and say, well, if you're talking about Espalier apple trees and they're done well and right, they don't take up eighteen inches. And I'm not sure you need a full ten foot for a parking space, 'cause most of them run either eight and a half to nine foot. So again, there are some trade-offs there, but I think that we, I am supportive of this project. Are you telling me something? So anyway, I, 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 again, I, I support this project. It is thinking. Anyway, I, I, again, I, I support this project. It is thinking outside the box. It is providing housing units. It is doing it in a way that I believe is maintaining the context along Broadway. So I just think that we need to be a little bit more open.
Well, I'm going to agree with my fellow commissioners and some of the members of the, of the folks in attendance that this is, you know, I think a very exceptional design and overall concept. And I, I actually live on a lot that's only fifty feet wide and took an old house and added to it and essentially decided to both preserve a tree and create a courtyard in order to work with a narrow space like that. So I, I think you've, you know, come on one of the only solutions that works for something this small. I think the, the crux of the issue is if you don't get the CEQA, if you don't ask for the CEQA exemption, then you can get the planned development approach. But it means that you're going to have to endure the delay of an initial study and the likelihood of a negative declaration that essentially lets the project move forward. I don't see a way of resolving the conflict between this particular CEQA exemption application. And it's a limitation that would seem to me to, to have an effect on your ability to use the planned development approach to working with this, with this property. I'd be looking for the opinion of, of staff and a city attorney on this. But I, I don't see any way out of it that doesn't, I understand it feels like a roadblock perhaps, but it's also, I don't think I'm comfortable nor should the city be comfortable in knowingly violating the law. And if the law is that this CEQA, this particular CEQA exemption doesn't make the planned development an option, then we've got to explore the alternatives. So I would like to, you know, see if we can resolve that question. And maybe it's going to take more research to do it, but it seems to me that's the sticky wicket at the moment. I think from a design standpoint, from the auto standpoint, I mean, one idea I had was you build these units and, and, and offer them with a smart car to, to each of the buyers and include it in the house price. And you could get twice as many automobiles in this, in this site with, with cars that are actually much, much smaller. But that, that's, that's just a flippant idea. I think of more consequence is what the city attorney and staff's opinion is about this CEQA exemption.
Well, as we stated in the staff report, we, we haven't opined one way or the other. That's the purpose of our discussion here tonight. Clearly, the PUD or the PD is a section of your municipal code, so it's got to be consistent with the general plan. It's the application of, of how you use that PD within that context and how it relates to the class thirty-two exemption. So clearly, it's consistent with the general plan to use the PD. Then the question is, inside that box, how far can you move? And we have to kind of go with the municipal code as to what it tells us to do or not do in the PD. So we'll be, we'll be reviewing this quite clearly as, like I said, we could have said, the applicant has requested and we concur that it's that way. We haven't got to that point yet. If, if it's not the right tool, then we'll do the initial study. But I will tell you that an initial study doesn't mean the next step is a negative. It's an ER, EIR needs to be prepared unless there's a negative declaration that can be made, whether it's mitigated or just a straight negative debt.
Can, can I ask a brief follow-up question on that? So the class thirty-two exemption says, consistent with the general plan designation, general plan policies, as well as applicable zoning designation and regulation. So how does the PD interplay, play with the zoning?
Well, the PD, just like any other thing, like a variance or like the strictures of each particular zoning district, it allow, if it's in the zoning code, then it's going to be allowable to use as a tool.
So these minimum lot sizes are much smaller, so that doesn't.
The PD allows you to do that. Because the PD attaches to the, to the base district. Okay, I missed the question, I guess.
So just to be, so the PD gives them and allows them to give an exemption under CEQA?
It allows for flexibility in the design without reading it specifically, but that's the kind of thing is how far can we go in the PD?
So, and, and this is the thing where, you know, this is where we need your support because we've tried to do everything possible from our standpoint to make this project work. And we've been super diligent and it brings so much of the value that Sonoma is seeking from price point to, you know, first time home buyers, the green aspect of it, the sizing of it. But if we have to go through this whole process, it's going to kill the project. And it's not, it's not feasible at that point because it's going to delay things for another year.
That's true.
Yeah, it is. That's, we've been told that to go through a whole CEQA process, it takes about a year.
No, an initial study.
Sir, I mean, if we started now.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just something.
I think we, we, we have the cards on the table and I think at this point, staff has got some work to do. But let me get just a couple of comments in since I haven't had a chance to speak. And then do you have anything else, Veronica, that you want to add tonight? Did you want to come in, Commissioner McDonald?
Thank you. The only comment I want to make is that if this is going to go before our commission for design review and it comes back, I believe it would be very helpful to do some sort of modeling so we understand the neighborhood context and, 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 you know, get a better sense of what the, the project will look like in a more three-dimensional mode. And I think you've got the capability of doing that and providing it to the commission.
Just in, in the, for full disclosure, I did have the opportunity to meet with the applicants in our preliminary session with our planner, Christina. And so I've had some exposure to this concept before. And it, it's interesting. I think what happens is the, the project grows on you. And, and you begin to appreciate what you have been able to accomplish in a very difficult situation. So I, I'm going to certainly encourage our staff and our city attorney to, to work through the nuances of what's required for a CEQA exemption versus having to go through potentially killing the project because of an initial study. But our hands will be tied by whatever we're told that we are able to do or not do. I, I think you've had positive encouragement from the commission. I think, I, I don't think you've had many comments that have come out that have changed what you've proposed. There have been some concerns about some, some things that are difficult, but you've, you've approached those and, and I think you have a chance to work with those. So like has been stated up here, really the, the linchpin or the, the stumbling block, if you would, is, is how we deal with whether you need a CEQA exemption or not to proceed. And we can't answer that as a commission. We have to have research by staff and research by our city attorney to figure out if, if it's possible. And when they're able to do that, we'll be able to consider a, a formal use permit request on your part for whatever it takes. And I hope you've had enough direction, realizing you don't have the ideal world of everything is simple, but nothing seems to be. And we faced that all night and we've been facing that for some time now. So all we can say is we'll, we'll try to do the best we can to, to work through whatever the, the problems are and see if we can come up with an acceptable solution.
So I haven't talked about the project yet.
And you don't really have to tonight. It's a study session.
Well, I just started talking about CEQA.
Oh, unless, okay. If, if, if you want to just give your thoughts on the project itself, that's fine.
They're positive. But my point is, in my view, I think it's important to follow the law. And I don't want to slow down housing, but I also don't like the, you know, whether it's going to kill the project or not. That's not how we make decisions. We have to follow the law and I don't see how an exemption is appropriate for this project. And I think it would set a horrible precedent. And I think, you know, I hopefully, I want staff to do their job. And I think doing their job would not be doing an exemption here. And I don't want to kill the project, but I just want to do things the right way.
I, I understand that and I think we all agree with that. It's just that we need some, some more work done by staff and by the city attorney to determine where we go. Did you have some, something else, David?
Yeah, clearly we, we got the message and I think the applicants heard the, the question before the commission. I am interested in, in hearing about the peer review. I like that concept because right now the applicant has provided that review. That this, the question of CEQA and the historicity of the structure, I'm interested in getting the information from the applicant. So if the commission is, is listening to that particular component, I'd like to hear your feedback on the peer review concept because I think that will assist staff.
I, I think we would certainly be in favor of peer review just because, just from what I've heard that we want to make sure we're doing things the right way. And we want to make sure that we, we haven't touched the wrong chord on, on historic structure and what's being done with it and, and the context it's being placed in. So if a peer review is required, I think we ought to try for it. It would.
We'd be doing a historicity thing because we have standards on the Secretary of the Interior and I don't discount Alice Duffy and doing her work, but not paid by the city. And so we kind of have to kind of look at the, the yin and the yang on it. There, there's some findings that she's made as far as decorative statements. I just want to make sure that the pros know what they're doing.
I think that's another thing we, we deemed to wrap up and make sure we.
And the reason why I would support a peer review is because the whole concept of an exemption, it has to meet a high bar because let's say the public didn't like this project, which I don't anticipate. Their remedies, it's a much higher standard in terms of legal remedies than a fair argument standard. And so would, would you agree, Veronica?
Yes.
Meaning if we were doing an initial study and we just had Alice's report and someone out there said, no, this is wrong, this is wrong, they could produce something that would require us to look at it differently. But they can't do that in the exemption process. And so I just don't think exemptions on historic properties, we have to be very careful with that.
Well, let's, the one statement I will make is the, is the following. An exemption cannot be used under any, this exemption or other exemptions, except for certain statutory exemptions, cannot be used for a project that will have an effect on a historic resource. So if there is an effect or an arguable effect on the historic resource, then the exemption is not an appropriate CEQA determination for this particular project. That question would in fact be challengeable. So the question of whether or not it would affect a historic resource would be challengeable and a way to challenge an exemption because it is a, an exception to the use of an exemption. The same way there are certain other exceptions to the use of an exemption under CEQA. So it's not an easy question. It is a question that is going to require some careful attention. And as you know, we've had some, I'll call it controversy surrounding our CEQA compliance for other projects recently. So it's something staff will look at and ultimately make a determination as to what would be the appropriate review for this project.
And I think with that, we're going to close this item and thank you very much for your patience and attention. And I hope we have tried to listen and can come up with an acceptable outcome. We'll move along to the next item and there are no items for discussion, but we have an issues update from the planning director.
So Mr. Chair, if I can, just a few things. On Tuesday afternoon, we did receive an appeal of the Cheesecake Factory action of your commission. Oh, cheesecake. Good night.
I hope there was appeal of the Cheesecake Factory.
I won't make any mistakes tomorrow. How's that? In three minutes. All right, the cheese factory, sorry. And that will be on a date in the future to be determined by the city council. You may recall that action was on the twenty-fifth of February and the twelve days, fifteen days of appeal period was on the twelfth. I do want to mention that your commission discussed issues relating to the development code, the housing, general plan. I can't report on all of those components, but I can tell you that within the next ninety to two hundred and twenty days, we'll be having some community conversations, if you will. We're still in the process of formulating the dates and the locations and logistics of some of those meetings where we discuss as a community, the need for providing housing within the city relative to components of our general plan and our housing element. I will be providing some follow-up on the, the question that you asked at the prior meeting relative to the minutes and the status of the minutes. So I don't think I've been ignoring that, but that is something that will be a work in progress and I'll report back. And as you heard earlier from the comments from the floor, this Monday, the city council will be hearing a presentation on the CASA project, CASA meaning house, on the ABAG MTC component, especially with respect to the ten particular elements of the compact. So I would encourage you to take a look at that and maybe just go look at the planning packet and the presentation that we have for it. That concludes my comments.
And not only that, they'll be considering the, the wine tasting room ordinance.
Yes, yeah, thank you. There are other things on the, on the agenda. I'm sorry. They will be receiving your recommendation as a commission on the wine tasting ordinance and hopefully conducting the first reading that night.
I, I do have a question for staff.
I'm sorry, can, can, yeah, I'm sorry. If I don't say it, I'll forget it or say it wrong. We also have a proposal going on, the calendar, consent calendar, to establish a funding source appropriation, if you will, to establish a historic train district designation. So now I'll be quiet.
Commissioner, comments?
My question is for all three of you. I do not welcome what I call overwhelming quantities of information that seems questionable on whether or not we really need it in order to make a cogent review and comment about a project. Case in point, item number seven point three. Why did we see marriage certificates? Why did we see? So my point is that, I don't, I, no, they were in the York, they were in the York court and it included other material that, trust and all that. So my point is that I would rather request that staff call through that. And if it isn't some sort of legal requirement, don't give it to me. Because if the idea is to thoughtfully review all of the material that we get, I want to do that. But I don't want to be, like, we got inundated with Verizon. They did the, the late hour dump. That was incredibly offensive. And so I'd like to, you know, if the goal is to have your commissioners be thoughtful and studious and do their homework, I want to do that. I'm not, I'm not afraid of hard work. But I don't want packets filled with superfluous stuff that really isn't necessary because that gives me more time to focus on what is necessary. on what is necessary. And now I'll shut up.
Any other commissioner comments?
We got to start these meetings earlier. City council starts earlier. Why, why are we, basically, why, why aren't we starting at 6:00 or 5:30? If we're going to be here till midnight, this is crazy. You don't get good quality thinking at this hour.
Get cheesecake.
Any other comments? Look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to take a roll.